Okay, good morning. I'll call to order the May 24th, Placer County Board of Supervisors meeting. We'll have a flag salute led by Supervisor Holmes.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Jim. And would you please read our meeting procedures?
Welcome to the Placer County Board of Supervisors meeting of Tuesday, May 24th, 2011. Agendas are available on the wall outside this meeting room. If you are here to speak on an issue not appearing on the agenda, you may do so during the public comment period. There's a three-minute time limit per speaker. The board is not permitted to take action on items addressed under public comment. When you speak, clearly state your name and address for the record. All items on the agenda will be open for the public to address before final action is taken. There's a three-minute time limit per speaker, which will be monitored by a timer on the podium. If there is a person speaking on behalf of a group with no other testimony from another member of the group, please identify yourself as such and your time may be extended at the pleasure of the board. Keep in mind that the chairman has the discretion of limiting the total discussion time on any item. If you are hearing impaired, we have listening devices available. It is requested that all pagers and cellphones be either turned off or put in the silent mode. Thank you for your participation and cooperation.
Thank you, Ann. Now is the time for public comment. This is the time when anyone from the public can comment to the board on something that is not on the agenda, keeping in mind that we can take no action on that. So if there's someone from the public, please come forward and state your name.
Hi, I'm James Smith and I live at 8342 Speckled Avenue, Blossom Street, and that's 500 feet from the Colton Beach Biomass Burner, at 890 Rosa. In my recent visit to the Rio Bravo Biomass Plant near Lincoln, on their shutdown maintenance day, I can say that you can probably monitor them from here, 10 miles away, as a crow flies. They are at an ideal site and their equipment was upgraded recently and they won prizes from Power Magazine for their performance. They have old power contracts, so it's hard to be profitable. If we can't find an ideal place to build a state-of-the-art small burner in East Placer or Nevada County, I think our chips should go there. Ultimately Tahoe residents and tourists will have to pay for all the clearing, transport, chipping, and burning to evade burning up in a horrendous wildfire like we had at Angora. And present gas prices were really hurt us. I'd say may have to pay. I hope we don't. You've been very kind to us. You'll probably not smell the chips or see the soot reported by our friends in Loyalton here in Auburn from the Rio plant. The plant engineer at Rio was encouraging in his 30-minute discussion with me, if people can monitor Kings Beach air problems from South Shore, you can probably monitor them from here. I'm kind of joking about that. It's a really nice site here. Well, please lift relative cone of silence from this project. Talk to us and work with us now. And please don't ever ask us to be patient and wait for consultants' reports. You must already have good facts to discuss with local experts, too. Some are here today. Consultants always are required to carry insurance. I know I was one. And why? Like us, they have feet of clay. Some can't even talk up here. Anyway, we residents need to be vigilant and use all the tools God gave us to do so. I was patient and waited, I wrote six moons here, if I meant six months, to call Brad about the issue I reported to you and the TRPA last fall, as requested on the NOP. I'm the local expert about nighttime noise for Lower Speckled Avenue. That may be way down the list of things people worry about, but that's what I'm good at. I live beside the loud hum from the present transformer substation, which is across the street, but the people that are having the worst problem with us are the residents that are going to be between these two sounds. And there, from my measurements with Radio Shack, it's already high and their numbers are the same as mine. It really doesn't sound that bad, but you measure it, it really moves around. And the snow may reduce it, so you've got to be careful when you measure it. I've lived there next to that for 14 years and worked with Phil Engineer, now with Liberty Energy, and most of the minor problems that affect us around there. He and his fellow workers have been very good neighbors. I can also say that the county workers, from Brad on down, that I've worked with, have served me well. Thanks for this chance.
Thank you. Can you distribute this to anybody? Just for the public and for your benefit, the board actually will be holding hearings on this as we move through the process and there'll be plenty of time to actually address the board when it is on agenda and we will have a very open and transparent process by which you can deal with this issue as it emerges. But if you have further comments, please come forward and state your name.
Good morning. My name is James McDonald. I live in Kings Beach and I have a commercial real estate firm there. And I just wanted to say that regarding the Biomass Plant, that we, you know, it's fairly close to the lake and we just, you know, think that it doesn't make a lot of sense for it to be located right in the basin and that a really good alternative would be the Cabin Creek location where the sanitary dump is. So I just wanted to relay that to you and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Megan Alburn. I live at 8265 Speckled. I've been a Lake Tahoe resident for 13 years and I own a doggy daycare business that is going to be less than 200 feet away from the Biomass Plant. I'm deeply concerned and very opposed. And just a couple of issues for me is the noise pushing the decibel limit, night and day below what it's supposed to be. The smell is reported to be somewhat of a mixture between rotten apples and turpentine. The traffic that it will increase, pulling in and out of a neighborhood. The proximity, less than 1,000 feet from an elementary school. The boys and girls club, a nursery, a doggy daycare, and neighborhood of long-term locals. So, and I also want to invite you to the Friends of Lake Tahoe next meeting and hopefully you can come and see what we're doing. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to address the board?
Ellie Waller, Tahoe Vista resident. The photograph that I'm passing around is the site of the Domus Affordable Housing on Chipmunk. I drove by there on May 21st. That photograph was taken. I'm really concerned that the number of trees that were removed, they could have done a better plan of where that building, I know it's a square-ish, kind of block-shaped building, and old growth cedar was taken out. I'm going to request from the TRPA, the Arborist Report, I'm really upset about how those trees were removed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just for clarification, when you submit items for the board, they have to stay here?
Okay.
So that picture stays for, or a copy of that?
I'll give you a second.
Great, thank you.
Is there anyone else who'd like to address the board on something not on the agenda? Please come forward.
My name's Gretchen Wagenbach and I live in Kings Beach down on Brook Ave. And I'm also here to talk about the Biomass Plant. We appreciate the efforts that you guys are putting forward to come up with a renewable energy source. I just really don't feel that in the basin is the place to do it. I support Cabin Creek, however, looking at the plant in Loyalton and Carson, it doesn't seem that this technology has truly been ironed out yet. And I'm wondering if there's other ways we can invest our money with this grant to provide a better source of renewable energy. All I want to say is that the Kings Beach residents finally feel like our town is getting cleaned up. This is kind of a slap in the face. And you cannot underestimate the beauty of the lake. People come from around the world. Please keep this in mind. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
My name's Linda Slack Cruz. I'm a Tahoe Vista resident and I'm also here to talk about the Biomass Plant. My take is a little different. In one of your articles recently, you suggest that the plan outlines the need for forest thinning practices to improve forest health and prevent catastrophic wildfires. In all the research that I've been doing, I can't find a place where there's documentation showing support of the project by the U.S. Forest Service or the fire districts that are in the basin. Right now, there was an article in The Bonanza in 2010 suggesting that they had talked to a Forest Service representative named David Foriner and he suggests that the open burning that we currently do in the basin, which is only done several months out of the year, the expense to that is as low as $700 per acre. However, if you were to do the biomass and actually transport that fuel, the actual cost could be 1,700 to 3,000 per acre. With all of our cutbacks and so forth, how are these departments supposed to increase those expenses to remove that, those fuels and actually take them to a facility? It doesn't make sense. We're living in a basin, which means that our slopes are at 30%. In order for them to actually remove those debris, in some instances, you'd actually need a helicopter. How is that cost-effective? So in looking forward at putting something like that in our basin, where our air quality is definitely a concern, how are they going to remove the stuff to get it to the plant? The other thing I'm looking at is how is it that our ground is under the cover of snow six months out of the year? The actual burning that takes place right now is only a few months. We're talking with a Biomass Plant 24/7, 365 days of the year. If that's going to happen, where are they going to get that fuel? So I guess another question would be, what are you going to use to burn? Is it garbage? Is it sewage? Is it just wood? And if it is wood, it's my understanding that the cleanest air quality comes from just the logs. That means that all of the branches and so forth still have to be burned because if you put those through the biomass, your quality of your air, it's definitely decreased. So those are just my thoughts. I don't know what you've done to look at those and I'm hoping that when we do have a meeting that is addressing biomass, that maybe those things can be talked about so that at least we can understand it a little bit better. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to address the board on something not on the agenda? Seeing no one, I will close public comment and...
Mr. Chairman, while we can't take action, may I make a brief comment?
Sure, you bet.
I really want to thank folks for showing up today on this. I've been hearing from a number of people that there was concern in the basin that we were going to be taking action on this today, which is absolutely, as you can see, not the case because it's not on the agenda. I have asked the chair to agendize this item for our July meeting in Tahoe, when the board will be up in Tahoe. It is my hope that the draft EIR will be out by then, but just the vagaries of EIRs, it may or may not be out at that point. I'm pleased to see from the Friends of Lake Tahoe flyer here, wanting to take a look at Cabin Creek, which is part of the process that we're going through right now. And just one of the things that I really want to get out into the public knowledge is that in order to look at Cabin Creek, we need to continue the EIR process. If we discontinue it, we can't even look at the Cabin Creek site. So we're going to continue to move forward with the environmental documents and looking at that. And I realize how frustrating it is, but I ask you to bear with us at the county in moving forward on that document so that we really can analyze Cabin Creek as part of the environmental document and part of the analysis for where and if a biomass facility is even appropriate for either the Tahoe Basin or the Tahoe area. So I know it's frustrating, but please just bear with us. I'm very clearly hearing the voices of your community, as I know the rest of my board members are, and all the folks at Placer County who are involved in this process. So again, I thank you for coming out today and really appreciate your comments.
How will we know when the meeting will be done?
It's always on the county website and it's always publicized in the Sierra Sun. We announce it at the NITRAC, which is the North Tahoe Regional Advisory Council meetings, as well as the Squaw Valley Municipal Advisory Council and the Donner Summit Municipal Advisory Council as well. So there'll be a number of opportunities for the public to be aware of when and where that meeting will be.
Jennifer, roll the comments. I'm sorry, the public comment is closed, sir. We do have to conduct a meeting. But I saw some people come in during your comments, Jennifer, so just again to clarify and summarize, the biomass item is not on today's agenda, so all the comments that have been made today were made under public comment. There will be very adequate notice as to when it will be put on the agenda. Jennifer's requested that it actually have some level of discussion when we're up at Lake Tahoe on July...
25th and 26th.
I'm sorry. 25th and 26th. These processes are very public, very transparent. I think out at Community Development Resources, we still have a system whereby if you're interested in a particular issue, you can give your name and address, and I've seen Michael nodding to say yes. So if you get to us, your name and address, probably email is the best bet, but the county will actually contact you and notify you as this process moves through, again, a very public hearing process. So again, thanks for your effort coming down here. If there was miscommunication, if someone indicated that this item was on the agenda, sorry if that happened. Agendas are posted on the webpage. You can check to see those for yourself in the future and make sure that you don't travel all the way down here unnecessarily. But thank you.
Mr. Chair, if I might, also, I see that there's upcoming meetings by different groups. If they would invite county staff to those meetings, county staff would be happy to provide whatever updates or, so that we can provide at that time.
Good. Thanks, Tom. All right, next is Supervisor Committee Reports. And if I could lead off on this one, I was remiss, in our last meeting, at the Bruin Ranch Ceremony, the Placer Land Trust gave the board this gorgeous painting for its participation in the Harbor Go Reserve program that the Placer Land Trust completed. So I think it should be, we should have a plaque, Tom, that acknowledges why the board presented this and we should present it or place it somewhere in a very public place. But again, thank you to the Placer Land Trust and Gorgeous Paint. And other committee reports. Jim? No, you don't. I'm sorry. Jennifer?
I don't actually have a committee report, but I did want to report that I went to a dinner at which our chairman was honored by the regional Sierra Club organization for his work on both Placer Legacy and the PCCP, among others, and held up as a model as how people who are both pro-development and pro-environment can work to create positive outcomes for all of us. And I just really wanted to say, Robert, I was, you know, very pleased to see that recognition and was very pleased to be part of that evening and thank you very much for that.
Thank you, Jennifer. Any other committee reports? Seeing none, we will move on to the consent agenda. This is a list of items intended to be passed all in one motion, but the board would be happy to pull something and discuss it individually if any of my colleagues request that and/or anyone from the public. Jack?
Item 19 and items, item 29, A through C.
I'm sorry, is 19 and 20?
29.
Okay. Any other requests for items to be pulled? Seeing none, is there a motion on the consent?
Move approval of the following remaining items.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda as modified. Roll call, Ann?
Holmes?
Aye.
Duran?
Aye.
Euler?
Montgomery?
Yes.
Yes. So we will now take up first item 19.
Item 19, I just wanted to make a comment on. I wanted to thank, I wanted to thank staff for working with the water company to provide a little bit of additional water for the crisis that we're currently facing. This was one of those items that came up. There was a lot of good cooperation between PCWA, the city of Roseville, and our executive department, and also County Legal for going through the prior agreement to make sure that the franchise was protected and that there were certain controls that were put on that would alleviate and end the pumping at a specific time. So I just wanted to comment and compliment everybody for working together to make this happen.
Good comments, so thanks, Jen. Jack, is there a motion?
Is there a? Motion approved.
Second?
Yes, second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And item 29, revenue sharing, A, B, and C.
I just wanted to pull this off for a vote.
Is there a motion?
Move approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve revenue sharing, item 29, A, B, and C. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstain?
We will now move to our first timed item, our 9:15 item, which is Health and Human Services, excuse me, System of Care, Adopt a Resolution Proclaiming May is Mental Health Awareness Month. Maureen, good morning.
Good morning. Good morning, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Maureen Baumann with the Health and Human Services Adult System of Care. We are proud that this board is considering the adoption of a resolution proclaiming May is Mental Health Awareness Month in Placer County. The month of May has been recognized as a national mental health awareness month since 1949 and celebrated many times in Placer County. This year's theme, Live Your Life Well, seeks to increase the number of people who take action to protect their mental health in times of great personal challenge and in the face of ongoing stress. Wellness encompasses balance in all aspects of life, mental, physical, emotional, and persons who have achieved this sense of wellness can be fully engaged in both their family and the community. According to the Surgeon General, approximately 25% of the U.S. population has some type of mental illness in any one year. This disease really does affect all of us. This ranges from mild depression to, you know, very clearly psychotic disorders. And many people with mental illness today are actually treated in their primary care settings as opposed to treated by specialty mental health professionals. However, I would just have to say that this illness does have pretty significant impacts in our society, including unemployment, disability, incarceration, homelessness, substance abuse, and unfortunately, suicide. It's estimated that the indirect costs nationally exceed $100 billion. And these costs can be impacted and we must take action. The success rate for early identification and treatment of mental illness is 60 to 80% for individuals actively participating in a recovery plan. In addition to medication treatment and therapy treatments provided by professionals, peer support groups, and other community services can also be critical components to enhance recovery. Attention to diet, exercise, sleep, friends, and meaningful activity contribute to overall health and wellness. Research has demonstrated that mental health is key to overall physical health and early detection and treatment can result in a substantially less debilitating course of treatment. In our society, unfortunately, mental illness still holds some stigma and this stigma gets in the way of people seeking treatment and getting into recovery. The Placer County Campaign for Community Wellness is a community-led initiative in partnership with Placer County and has implemented community-based programs to improve lives in Placer County. Specific state funding has been used to both prevent and respond to issues of mental illness in our community and since 2005, we have touched the lives of over 18,000 people in Placer County. The webpage, campaignforcommunitywellness.org, provides information to persons seeking answers about mental health issues. Community partners want to join us to raise awareness about mental health issues for all of our communities in an effort to reduce stigma associated with mental illness so that people can actually get the help they need and achieve recovery. In the month of May, there was a poster contest, which we will be telling you about, as well as a fabulous event, a Battle of the Bands, to engage young people in a recovery-oriented event to promote good mental health as well as identify resources for them. I now like to introduce Jennifer Price. She's the Director for the Advocates for the Mentallyill Housing Program and she'd like to give you an update on her organization and tell you a little bit about the poster contest.
This was our winning poster. Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm Jennifer Price with the Advocates for Mentallyill Housing and we provide transitional and permanent housing in Placer County for people with mental illness, adults with mental illness. We also work with Sutter Hospital and the Gathering Inn in Roseville to provide a short-term stay program for people who are homeless and getting treatment in the emergency room. So we have six houses total. Two of those are for permanent housing. One is for the program with the emergency program and the other four, sorry, three are for transitional housing. Each house has six people, approximately six people in it, and they are in a two-year program to learn independent life skills so that they can get out and live on their own in the community. We are concerned with stigma that is associated with mental illness because our houses are impacted by it directly. Whenever we move into a neighborhood and we put our house there, we get a lot of resistance from the community because they're afraid of people with mental illness. And this is just really hard for us when we're working with individuals who are on a recovery plan and they are trying to move forward and become independent in the community. So one of our board members had the idea that since May is Mental Health Month nationally that we do a poster contest and that we include everybody in the community in that contest and we did. So we received a total of 16 posters, really nice posters, well-done posters, and we selected the winner, which I gave over there. And we actually went and posted it in Auburn, in Rockland, in Roseville, anywhere we could. You know, Flower Garden, Starbucks, the library, anywhere we could get them to let us put up a poster, we did. So this was the winning poster and it says, "Sometimes my head is in the cloud, sometimes the cloud is in my head. Mental illness affects us all. Mental Health Awareness Month." And this was actually done by a consumer. So the winner was a person named Pat. He won first place and we had a $100 prize. Second place went to a gentleman named Robert, who won a $50 prize, and he had a beautiful poster as well. You can see here. So he said, "Sometimes some of us have more off days than others. It doesn't make us different, it just makes us human. Asking for help is the start of having better days." And then the last one was a gentleman named Richard from Roseville, who did Mental Health is Everyone's Concern. So we had a lot of, we had some really great posters. So next year, we hope to do another campaign and we hope to get more participants and we hope to get started a little bit earlier. This year, the idea didn't come to us until about March, so we had a short timeframe. Next year, we're hoping to start in January and actually have a big event associated with it in May, too, because we really want people to be aware that May is Mental Health Month. And then lastly, we'd like to talk about how our program can be very successful. We have a lot of people coming out of our transitional housing program who actually do get into their own apartments in the community and are able to live independently with jobs, going to school, whatever works best for them. We had a gentleman now, actually, who was in our program. He was homeless before he came in and he went into our home in Rockland that is specifically for homeless individuals with mental illness. He went in there and he was there for two years. During that time, he attended Sierra College and he was able to go from being homeless to actually being, receiving income. We were able to help him get SSI. And now he actually is graduating from our program. He has left our program as of two weeks ago and has his own apartment here in Auburn. So it just shows you that with a little bit of help, it can go a long ways and we can get people in, help them, get them on income, show them, you know, where they can go and help them find a place to live permanently. So, thank you.
Thank you very much for your presentation.
So to wind up, I wanted to give you a little bit of detail about this great Battle of the Bands. We were hoping to have somebody else present, but I'd be happy to give you the update. There were over 250 people that came to participate in the Battle of the Bands. Those were not including the people that were there with resource tables for the young people. Multiple agencies participated to provide that information to them. There was a total of seven bands with an age range of 10 to 30. In fact, the winning band had a drummer who was 10 years old, quite talented young man. The winning band was called To End All Silence and they received 10 hours of reg- In fact, the winning band had a drummer who was 10 years old, quite talented young man. The winning band was called "To End All Silence," and they received 10 hours of recording studio time. There was a five-person youth panel who judged the bands as they played, and the community really wrapped around the youth organizers to make this a success. The event actually was planned for two years because a group of youth and young people in the community said there weren't enough affordable things to do in the community, and they didn't know where to get the resources. Throughout the planning of this event, over 50 young people were engaged to make this event happen. I would say that this really was a true success. So as you know, we have a lot to celebrate here in Placer County, and I would recommend to you that you proclaim May as 2011 as Mental Health Awareness Month, and I thank you.
Jim?
First of all, Maureen, I just want to thank you and Health and Human Services for the services that you provide for those people that need them, particularly in this time when there's budget shortfalls. I know Health and Human Services is always moving everybody around to try to make it work, and we should be really proud of our Health and Human Services, and I just wanted to thank you. And I will make the motion to approve this item.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt the resolution just discussed. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Maureen.
Thank you.
Jessica. We will now take up our first department item. Administrative Services procurement. Jim, we've got three items.
Well, good morning. Jim Bogin, your purchasing manager. Item 6A is requesting your Board's approval to award competitive bid number 164 to VSS Emoltech of West Sacramento for asphalt emulsion delivered and spread for road maintenance projects. Emoltech was the lowest of three bidders for this requirement. On your approval, I will sign a blanket purchase order effective for the next fiscal year with Emoltech to supply asphalt emulsion in the maximum amount of $300,000. And we'll take any questions you have.
Jennifer?
Jim, thank you. Can you tell me, is the asphalt emulsion, is the product itself coming from VSS Emoltech?
They actually bid several sources for their materials.
And will this be coming, will this be sourced locally? Where is this coming from?
It's, all of their sources were in the valley.
Okay.
And so we expect that it'll come from the valley as long as they can get what they need in the valley.
So our expectation, at least at this point, is it will not be coming from Meta Vista, for example?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes.
Any other questions, comments? Anyone from the public want to address this? Pleasure of the Board.
Move approval.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the contract just discussed. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Jim. Item B?
Item B is requesting your Board's approval to award competitive bid number 156 to Blaine Stumpf Trucking of Shingle Springs for aggregate materials and hauling for road maintenance projects. We received seven bids for this request, and Blaine Stumpf was the lowest overall bidder. Therefore, we're recommending award of a blanket purchase order effective for the next fiscal year to Blaine Stumpf Trucking for aggregates and hauling, and the same answer applies here. There were no bids involving Meta Vista. The maximum amount would be $328,225, and we request your approval.
Questions? Pleasure of the Board.
Move approval.
Been moved and seconded to approve the contract up to $328,225 with Blaine Stumpf Trucking. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. And item C, Jim?
And 6C, in keeping with Mental Health Awareness Month now, is requesting your Board's approval to award competitive bid number 174 for temporary help psychiatrists to the three lowest of 11 bidders, and those are in order Medical Doctors Associates of Norcross, Georgia, Staff Care Incorporated of Irving, Texas, and Jackson &amp; Coker of Atlanta, Georgia. There were no local bidders on this bid. The bid requested locum tenens or temporary help psychiatric services for the Department of Health and Human Services. The contracts will run from July 1, 2011, through June 30, 2012. Our current contractor experienced difficulty in providing temporary help psychiatrists who were acceptable to HHS. Thus, our recommendation to award a primary contract to the lowest-priced firm with two backup contracts. In the event the primary firm cannot locate a suitable candidate in the time required, HHS will request candidates from the next low bidders. Staff recommends a primary contract to Medical Doctors Associates, the lowest bidder, in the maximum amount of $150,000, and secondary contracts in the amount of $75,000 each to Staff Care and Jackson &amp; Coker. In the event that one of the firms supplies more qualified services than the others, we also request authority for the purchasing manager to adjust the BPO amounts within the requested maximum aggregate amount of $300,000, and we'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Jennifer?
Jim, again, thank you. All of these, these three entities are all out of state, is that correct?
Correct.
But our expectation is that they will be hiring psychiatrists from within state, within the local area?
We would expect so, yes.
Okay, so I mean, they're not going to be shipping people in from Tennessee to... Maureen, did you want to address that?
They can actually do either, so they just need to produce a psychiatrist. Sometimes they pay for lodging and get them locally, and they stay depending on the length of state that they're staying with us. So they can do either. The idea is that we actually get quality psychiatric staff. That's the goal, and however they get them to us, we're open to.
And can we assume then that state law is going to, or whatever applicable law is going to say, this is the level of service that you have to provide within California, so it would not be different, say, from someone coming in from out-of-state?
They all have to be certified in Cal, they have to be licensed in California. So many of the ex-op docs are licensed in multiple states.
Thank you, that was my concern. Yes.
Any other questions? Questions from the public? Seen then, pleasure of the Board?
Move approval.
It's been, I think, moved and seconded. Moved down second to approve three contracts for psychiatric care not to exceed $300,000. As discussed, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Maureen. Item seven is the approval of minutes, but I need to point out that there was an error in the agenda. The minutes should be for the 11th and 12th, is that right? According to county council, with that announcement, we can go ahead and consider the item.
Move approval.
It's moved and seconded to approve the minutes of April 11th and 12th. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, and one of second. Thank you, Kirk, and everyone else for pointing that out to me. Item eight is County Executive, Aiken Ranch, lengthy discussion here, but basically the receipt payback of a transaction we did. I think it was our first legacy transaction. Allison?
Thank you. Allison Carlos with the County Executive Office to present item 8A. And staff is requesting that your Board would approve a resolution that would authorize the Facility Services Director to execute all documents and take action to complete the extinguishment agreements for relinquishing our interest in agricultural conservation easement at Aiken Ranch, and to accept and record the easement deed for a 30-foot access along the Auburn Trail. And in 2000, year 2000, as the Chairman indicated, for $399,000, the county purchased an agricultural conservation easement at such time that the buyer of Aiken Ranch Wetlands, Inc., was involved with that purchase. That easement called for the county to extinguish its interest at such time that the agricultural conservation easement would be converted to a habitat conservation easement. And also, at that time, the county would be reimbursed for those costs plus interest. So now it's the, what's happened is Wetlands, Inc. has been authorized to convert that to a habitat conservation easement from state and federal agencies, so it's time for us to relinquish. And therefore, the county is trying to do this action, execute those extinguishment agreements, and we would be paid $576,186.18. $399,000 would be the original principal, and the interest is $177,146.18. Funds would be deposited into the Open Space Trust Fund unless otherwise directed, and also to perfect the public's right to the access. As contemplated in the original agreement, we are soliciting and with agreement for the easement of the 30-foot access trail for non-vehicular. So with that, if there are any questions, I know that Lauren is here with planning, and we'd be happy to take any of your questions.
Jack?
I just want to make sure that the only rights that are being affected in this resolution are the rights of the parties that are involved, the county and the folks that own Aiken Ranch.
That's correct. Yes.
Anyone from the public wish to comment on this? Pleasure of the Board.
Move approval.
Been moved and seconded to approve the resolution just discussed, which was an essence payback of our principal plus interest for the Aiken Ranch transaction. All of those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Yeah. Our item B is an update of the state budget, and Graham, could you present that to us?
Good morning. We hope so, Graham. That's right. The good news is that there's no paper and there's no PowerPoint, so we're, that suggests that either things are really good, or the news is so bad that I can't even put it up there.
But there's a light show.
There's a light show, that's right. The strobe lights will be coming in in a few moments. I'm Graham Conosse, I'm the Finance and Budget Operations Manager, and I'll actually go through this relatively briskly to give you an update relative to the state May revision, which came out last week, and some of the relevant competing plans that are now circulating and the largest open issues that are outstanding relative to the state budget. We began back in January with about a 26, or I should say the state, not the county, began with about a $26 billion shortfall, and the solution was essentially to split it in half into about half cuts and half tax increases, tax increase extensions. And the primary places of impact to the county, which totaled about $30 to $60 million and impacted services and realignment, included the proposed elimination of redevelopment agencies, the big realignment which impacted fire, Health and Human Services, and public safety, and there were a host of other impacts that were in there as well, impacting libraries and some of the other direct services provided in the county. Since that time in March, the legislature took a number of actions to try to bring that deficit number down. Their actions totaled $12.5 billion, and of which nine, about $9 billion were cuts primarily in direct services in the Health and Human Services area, direct services to clients. And they also adopted the public safety portion of the realignment in Assembly Bill 109, and that, as we previously discussed, was signed by the governor with a message saying, "But we're not going to actually do this until there's some funding source to pay for the realignment." And when I get towards the end of this, we'll circle back to that issue, given yesterday's U.S. Supreme Court decision. That may impact that. The May revise largely maintains the same framework that was in place with the January budget. There's a little bit, it's a little bit heavier on the cuts than it was in January, but largely it's a, it's pretty much a split between the revenues and the reductions. The, on the revenue side, there's actually some positive news in terms of the state relative to personal income tax receipts. $6.6 billion in higher revenues projected than was the case in January, and that's a combination of the current year of receipts, which are much higher, and flowing that through the next fiscal year. So that's actually some good news relative to the state of California. The revised deficit number is $10.8 billion, and that's after the reductions that have already been put in place and compensating for the, for the new revenues. Specifically related to the May revise, there are some things that are the same that are important. One, that the redevelopment elimination proposal remains the same as it was in January. Second, that most of the cuts that were proposed in January remain in place, and there are a couple of other changes, a couple of relatively smaller changes in terms of what's in or not in the cut package. And the realignment as a total framework is with the same structure that existed in January, which is that you have the proposed realignment of a whole host of services that's contingent upon the tax increase being put in place in order to fund them. There are some significant differences, though. In January, the governor proposed eliminating enterprise zones, enterprise zones tax credits at the local level, and that is now pulled back almost completely and instead shifted to a sort of mend-not-end approach for enterprise zones. And there's a couple of job creation-related jobs, tax credits, that have been added in using some of that new revenue. Also, the realignment proposal has improved to some degree from what was in place, what's been talked about over the last several months, in adding some additional dollars on the public safety side, not substantial amounts of money, but little bits and pieces in the different elements of public safety, and pulling some of those, some items out which were not a perfect fit or whereby the dollars didn't just go to counties, there were other players involved. So those things have been pulled out of the realignment. There are also some changes on the Health and Human Services side related to realignment, but largely it's very similar to what we've been talking about with your Board over the last few months. So the realignment changes are generally good. Another place that we've spent some time talking about through our budget workshops in the spring is in Health and Human Services specifically related to AB 3632. And as a reminder, that's the program where it's the mental health services provided to special ed students. And in the May revise, that mandate would shift from counties to schools, and they would receive additional education funding to pay for that. And we would likely work through 1112 as a bit of a transition year to, with some dollars perhaps going through counties, to work through a new model of services whereby we are not the ones on the hook related to the mandate in future years. I should also note that with respect to the realignment, the fire piece of it has been eliminated completely. There were a number of issues with how that was packaged and only impacted a few different areas in the state, and to some degree, it was included as a function of things that you had to include in order to get to the revenue target that the governor had, and so that's been pulled out completely. The taxes that would fund that realignment have also been scaled back somewhat on the personal income tax side. There was a five-year estimated increase related to personal income tax that has now been scaled down to four years. So the first year for 2011, that would not be in place, it would go into place in the second year. The May revise also does a few other things, eliminating a number of boards and commissions, and there are two different state departments that would be eliminated as well, and there's some reductions, a 25% reduction to state operations for the realigned programs. So that's what the governor's put on the table. There are two competing plans that are out there. First, the Assembly Republicans came out with a plan actually several days prior to the May revision coming out, which is, has a slightly lower estimate related to revenues, but does not rely on tax increases, does not entertain the realignment at all, and has some hedging relative to the elimination of redevelopment, where it could either be a partial, some sort of partial reduction to redevelopment or the outright elimination. It can kind of go either way in terms of how that's structured. There are a number of additional cuts under that plan in order for the math to work out overall and ensure the state has a balanced budget. So that's on the table. And then there's a third plan, which has been tabbed, the five-point plan that was put together by the Coalition for California's Financial Workout Plan. It's a number of local chambers of commerce and business councils in a variety of areas of the state. And it focuses on instituting a strict spending cap for the state, second, job creation, which is primarily not eliminating redevelopment or enterprise zones tax credits, and having some California environment... some California Environmental Quality Act regulation reform. They support the realignment as proposed by the governor. Also implementing pension reform that they deem fair to taxpayers and workers. It's not spelled out exactly what that means, but that's the concept. And then temporary tax increases, which from their... in their proposal is referenced as something less than five years is proposed by the governor, probably in a neighborhood of two to three is what it sounds like they're looking for. So right now, the legislature is... literally, right now, the legislature is debating the May revision. They have a slew of budget committee hearings throughout this week to try to meet a June 15 constitutional deadline for them to approve a budget framework. And there are four large open issues to deal with. One is whether or not there are taxes that are going to be included as part of the framework, whether approved by the legislature or at some point in the future by the voters. Second, yesterday's U.S. Supreme Court decision related to 33,000-plus inmates needing to be reduced at the state level and how that plays into the budget framework. The public safety portion of the realignment certainly fits that pretty well from just a state public policy perspective, but that may change the tax discussion in terms of how to package the whole thing together. Third, pension reform, which has been discussed a lot in Sacramento. And for the group of five Republicans that had been working with the governor on a potential deal earlier this year, that's one of the primary issues that they were seeking to have addressed. And then finally, the spending cap. And on the spending cap, there actually is one that was already approved in a prior year that has yet to come up for a public vote. And I believe that'll come up for a vote sometime in the next general election cycle. So we'd see that in about a year or so. And what's being discussed is something more than that, but unclear exactly what that may look like. That's generally the lay of the land related to the May revision and the timeline, the number of issues that are outstanding in terms of getting from here to June 15, assuming that we have a strong belief that the legislature can actually meet its constitutional deadline to have a complete budget in place by June 15. And with that, I'll stop and happy to entertain any questions that you might have.
Questions, comments by board members? Jennifer?
Thank you, Graham. Instructive as always. And there were a couple of issues in there that you did touch on, but I just wanted to circle back to them to make sure I understood what it was you had said. In terms of redevelopment, obviously, two of the Placer County's three redevelopment agencies are in the 5th district, so this has some concern for me. And it sounded like you said two different things. First, the governor's original proposal regarding redevelopment is still out there, and that's what he's still pushing for, which is essentially completely doing away with the redevelopment agencies. Have we had any more clarity on how sweeping that would be his proposal? Because I know there was some debate initially about that.
There are probably 15 different proposals related to eliminating redevelopment agencies. And it spans from a, well, redevelopment agencies can voluntarily chip in money to solve the state budget crisis on the super generous side, to outright full-scale elimination out of the gate, except for the bond commitments that already... that exist and having a structure put in place. What the governor's proposal would do is a lot closer to the outright elimination, based on how they've talked about it and what the proposal that actually went before the legislature for a full vote. They were one vote shy of putting that in place on the Assembly. His May revision proposal stays with that approach, which is far closer to not... basically eliminating redevelopment agencies than either a voluntary approach or something in between that would rehaul it. And what's in the Assembly Republican plan sort of has two proposals related to redevelopment because they're not unified overall in terms of what the approach might be. There's a split that's actually not partisan related to redevelopment. So they include in their write-up both the outright elimination, but also sort of a lesser approach that could be worked out, one of the other 15 proposals that's on the table. And that business, the five-point plan from the business community, takes more of a middle road, which is, let's figure out ways to address redevelopment to... in a way that keeps it in place but allows the state to sweep some dollars to get some budget savings. So they've taken that approach, and I think in a hope to save it from elimination. And if you're looking for, well, where's the middle road? I mean, their plan in many respects sort of stands in between what the conversation has been between, you know, the governor and the Democrats and the Republicans. They're sort of standing firmly in the middle of that circle.
But none of these plans are proposing, for example, if the redevelopment agencies are either done away with entirely or in part, returning those dollars to the special districts from whence they came.
There's... The elimination plans would have some dollars that would come back through the normal property tax distribution formulas, so some of that would go to special districts. There's a state rake-off in the first year of 1.7 billion, what's estimated to be $1.7 billion. And the way it's been proposed over, either in the second year or over time, that would go back to a relatively... whatever the historical property tax distribution formula is, where some goes to schools, some go to the counties, some go to the city, and the different special districts.
Okay. Thank you. That clarifies it for me. My second question was regarding the, I think it was 3632 that you referenced. And I know historically, the state has provided a subvention to Placer County to health and human services in support of the PCOE mental health programs that they provide to kids. So there's no proposal, even with this additional $6.6 billion in income tax revenue, there's no proposal to direct that back to the counties at this point. But the proposal, in fact, is to direct it directly to the schools.
So there's some work to be done here to clarify exactly what's... how this is going to play out in 1112. But as I understand it, the governor contemplates giving the mandate to schools as of July 1 of this year. 1112 would be, in many respects, a transition year in that counties would still... the way it's structured now, counties, there's still $98 million that would flow through counties in 1112 for that service. That doesn't fully cover the cost, but those are dollars that were approved back as part of the March budget package. So that would flow through counties, the way it's structured now, for the 1112 year, and then all of it would be funded under Proposition 98 for... on the education side. And from a funding standpoint, there's a little irony here, which is the mandate would go from counties to schools. And as the mandate goes from counties to schools, the amount of funding provided to the service goes up substantially. So there are... to more reflect what the actual cost might be to run the service. So Proposition 98, which funds K-12 schools, would go up $227 million in the first year and then $300 and change in the second year, and then there's an annual inflator where that would grow over time. But they would manage the service, and they could choose to do it in-house, they could choose to contract with the county, they could choose some other third-party entity to provide the service to some degree. But this is... there's a little bit... so I'm saying this with a little bit of speculation in the sense that there's a lot of detail to work out related to this particular issue. And as a matter of fact, at 11 o'clock this morning, there's going to be the first large education, health and human services legislature, budget committee discussion about this very issue and how to actually work it out over the course of the next year.
Let me weigh in for a second. We have a resident expert in this field, so Jerry will correct me if I'm wrong, but we are not mandated to provide the services. Schools are. We do it as a contractor to the school, and for the last X number of years, we provided $2 million worth of service, mental health services, to the school under contract. So there's a degree of difference here, not so much between the county and the schools, but the state not funding that obligation. We do not have the obligation to backfill that. It's the schools that have to contend with that service. We've had a very good relationship with the superintendent of Schools' office, but it is a paid-for service to provide that. And I think the constituency out to the families and the children are very appreciative of the county's services. So we stand by to provide that as essentially a contractor to the schools, not as a county service.
No, I am kidding.
This significant policy issue in terms of the approach would be that historical... what, AB 3632, the bill did when it was passed in 1984, is it said you have to do what's medically necessary from a mental health standpoint related to children in special ed. The new approach would be that you have to do what is educationally necessary related to services for that child, and that would be managed by the school. So what's... the services that are provided may actually look a little bit different because the focus would be slightly different than what it's been historically. And it's certainly... as Tom mentioned, I mean, it's certainly been... the problem with this is that, much like a lot of the mandates that we face, it's not been appropriately funded based on what we are mandated to do, which has created a lot of the tension. And things have worked far better in this county through a more regional cooperative agreement than has been the case in a lot of other counties in the state.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions or comments? Tom?
Just one other one, too. As this goes back into the state to deal with their budget woes and their issues, especially with the Supreme Court decision yesterday about the release of inmates from the state prison system, I know CSAC is very concerned because now the language is kind of changing, and I think it was captured at least by a quote in the Sacramento Bee on Senator Steinberg, is it, "Look what the Supreme Court has done to the counties." No, the Supreme Court has done that to the state of California. I think now everybody's under this assumption that, well, realignment's happened, so the counties are going to have to contend with this. No, realignment has not happened. We have not gotten the funds to provide for these services. And for especially Senator Steinberg to take this next step, that the Supreme Court is putting this burden on the counties, no, it's a burden on the state. And if we're going to assume some of that burden, the state of California has to pay us to provide those services. And counties need to make sure, and CSAC is providing that strong voice, it is still a state obligation. Don't forget that you have not funded the realignment and now place that burden on us. You're obligated, the state of California, to provide for the cost of those services.
Thank you, Graham. See no other questions or comments?
Thank you.
Appreciate the news being not devastating. We look forward to continuing our budget workshop. We will now go to our 10 o'clock item. And to do that, we have to adjourn as Placer County Board of Supervisors, but convene as the Redevelopment Agency Board, and we will consider a resolution regarding the five-year implementation plan for the North Lake Tahoe redevelopment project area. Jim?
Good morning. I'm here with Michael O'Haver, who's done most of the work preparing the plan. Before you... excuse me, just one second to get the... It's a bit of a surreal experience coming up here to talk you about our big plans for the next five years after we just finished talking about our proposed elimination. So put that in context. Nevertheless, the state has not taken any action, nor have we seen an indication of what the state's going to end up doing. So we are still carrying on with our duties and responsibilities. Part of that duty and responsibility is to prepare these five-year plans. It's a requirement for all redevelopment agencies. So with that, I'll let Michael start.
Good morning, gentlemen. The five-year implementation plan for the North Lake Tahoe redevelopment area is a requirement by law. The North Lake Tahoe redevelopment area is not a contiguous district. It's broken up. Basically, it stretches all the way from south of Tahoe City to Lake Forest. And then the other area is the Tahoe Vista-Kings Beach State Line area. The Tahoe City area itself is broken up into basically two redevelopment areas, one on the gateway as you come in on 89, and the rest, Tahoe City, basically the developed area, and it stretches all the way to Lake Forest. The Kings Beach Tahoe Vista area is outlined in the next slide, and that stretches all the way from Tahoe Vista to State Line. The requirements for an implementation plan, basically, they have to be updated every five years. We have to establish goals and objectives and outline how the agency will accomplish these goals during the five-year period. There is an optimized financial accomplishment and projection section, and the affordable housing part is a little bit different. It has to cover 10 years, not just the five years of the plan. This is a good point to interject. The citizen participation part of advertising for this five-year update is much more strict than a normal public hearing. We advertise not only in the local newspaper, which is required, but we also advertised in the Tahoe newspaper, the Sierra Sun. We posted the notice of this hearing in four public places, in... three of them actually in Tahoe City and two in Kings Beach. So we're required to post them in four places, but we've done it in five. And basically, the advertisement for the newspaper is not just one time, but it's three times, three consecutive weeks before the actual meeting. The implementation plan goals that were established before were reworked and revived, basically. They are to eliminate blight, provide affordable housing opportunities, to provide economic revitalization in the development area, to provide public infrastructure and facility improvements, as well as commercial and industrial improvements, to go along... to support environmental improvements, and to do what they can for advanced planning. Jim will take over now and talk a little bit more about the specific projects that we've got planned for the next five years.
Just to highlight a few of the things that are going on and that we want to continue. We do plan and hope to implement a number of projects and programs in each of the various communities within our project area boundaries. It's all subject to availability of funding and other factors. We typically do partner on a lot of projects with other agencies or other private property owners, businesses, and developers. And of course, as far as they are able to do something, that affects how much we can do, too. But other projects, we implement entirely on our own, we fully fund. But typically, we do partner with a lot of other groups. One of the biggest projects now in construction, very active right now up in Kings Beach, one of our most active areas, is the Affordable Housing Project called Kings Beach Scattered Sites Housing. And that project, two of the five sites began construction last summer. They're expected to be completed this summer and open for rentals of new eligible residents this summer. And then the other three sites will begin construction, that's the plan, this summer, and for completion in 2012. You've heard in the past about the Community Enhancement Program with TRPA, and we... a couple of years ago, the TRPA governing board designated five different projects for this program within Kings Beach. The first project that you already saw the slide of was the housing project. There were four others, commercial or mixed use. Three of those projects are still in the works, some of them more active than others, but all in Kings Beach. So we're continuing to... So, we're continuing to coordinate with those parties involved with those projects. A project that we are not in the lead-in, but we have provided about a half million-dollar funding for, is the Transit Center in Tahoe City. Eastern Gateway is a big focus. At the eastern end of Kings Beach, we have acquired property on three of the four corners, trying to make an important, positive revitalization impact to that whole community as you're entering into California and in Kings Beach in a commercial area. And the one is the housing project. The other two corners are sites that we own, and we plan to issue RFPs and get private development partners to complete projects. The project on the southwest corner, the so-called Eastern Gateway site, we are preparing to, we actually just opened bids on Friday for contractors to do contamination cleanup because there was an old gas station there, and we have to haul out dozens of truckloads of contaminated soil. So, you'll be hearing more about that, hopefully coming to you in the coming weeks for a contract to begin that work this summer. Commercial core improvement project, this is a public works project that you all know about very well, and these photos were just provided at the workshop last week in Kings Beach at the event center, showing the before and after of some of the specific sites within the project footprint. We, the redevelopment agency, has committed $11 million towards this project. We expect to continue our commercial loan program, which we provide facade, forgivable facade loans, as well as other commercial loans. And the pictures you're seeing are two loans that we completed in the last couple of years. One was for the Morelatos Lakeshore Resort, and the other one was for the old Brockway Golf Course. So, that concludes. I did want to mention that you have in your packet some correspondence we received in response to the draft plan, two pieces of correspondence, one from Ann Nichols and one from Ellie Waller. And this is a public hearing, so.
Thank you, Jim. Any questions of staff by the board? First, Jennifer.
I just want to start by saying that a number of meetings ago, I had asked that the board be provided with all PowerPoints ahead of the meeting so that we could look them over. That's yet to happen. I really think that's critical. There were some slides in there that I would have liked to have had the opportunity to look over ahead of time. It's kind of neither here nor there for today's discussion. One of the things, Jim, that you and I had discussed that concerns me is that we have a very long list of things that we would like to do sort of aspirationally. But what I really want to see is a prioritization of these projects. I realize that sometimes things come up opportunistically, that funding comes available or a partner comes available, but I think it's critically important that we prioritize the projects within all these areas, not just North Tahoe, but Highway 49 and the Sunset Industrial Area as well, so that, you know, we have a vision of what's most important to us and what we want to focus our time, money, and effort on. Those are really my comments at this point. I know that both Ann and Ellie are probably going to have some comments on this today, but thank you for the presentation. Again, I'd like to encourage you to work with us and the community to identify the priorities.
Kirk.
Mention in the staff report that, it mentions copies of the draft plan are distributed to the North Tahoe Regional Advisory Council, and this plan was discussed by NITRAC at the meeting on April 14. What was the general sense of the conversation at NITRAC? Did they make a recommendation? I see nothing here referencing.
We were on their agenda in April and made a presentation. We had some general discussion about it. There were, they did not take any action on it. It was not on the agenda in May, but I did come back to NITRAC, gave them a new, passed out a new set of the document, and again invited more comments at that meeting. But there was no action taken at either of those meetings by NITRAC.
Can we get a sense of what the feedback was, what the kind of conversation was? Were there questions, comments, concerns expressed?
The feedback we got through emails, which I think you had copies of in your packet, referred in general to the relation between our implementation plan and the upcoming updates of the community plans and the TRPA regional plan. It's a complicated issue, and is trying to come up with a framework and a set of goals for what is the community to look like, and how does redevelopment fit into that. But I did not see in the comments that we received anything very specific in terms of this project is a priority, or this one we want, or this one we don't want. It was more of a general discussion about needing to coordinate those three things.
There's no mention of whether this was submitted to the Resort Association for their review and comment?
It was not specifically solicited to the Resort Association.
Okay. You mentioned, and rightly so, that much of what we do is simply supplement private sector dollars that get invested in the community. There are a number of private sector development projects within our redevelopment area. Was our implementation plan submitted to discuss with those people that would be putting in private sector dollars?
I know that, I mean, we're in regular contact with a number of those parties, and I've had discussions over the last few weeks with several of them, and about the implementation plan. There was not a lot of recommendations that I heard coming from them, but definitely they were aware of them and are generally supportive. Our implementation plans typically throw everything out there and say, "These are all the things we would like to do." It doesn't mean that we expect to do them all, or even a majority of them, but these are all the things we would like to do and propose looking at for the future. And so, in that sense, it captured, we attempted to capture the potential projects for the future, and proposed the goal of supporting private investors, property owners, business owners, residents in projects that they want to do. So, they were generally supportive of that.
Any other questions? Jennifer?
I just wanted to respond to Supervisor Ullrich's question. It did come in front of the NITRAC as an information item originally. The intention was that it was going to come back the following month as an action item, but frankly, the NITRAC didn't want to hear it as an action item. They just said, "We don't feel that we need to take action on this." I know that in conversations I had with some of the NITRAC members, they expressed some frustration about the lack of priorities, and they just sort of felt like it was too much, that it was kind of overwhelming, and that whatever recommendation that they would make on it, they didn't feel a level of comfort in making a recommendation. So, it is a little bit of a concern for them, as for us, and it gets back to my desire that we prioritize these things and maybe present a smaller set of potentialities to groups like NITRAC and the Squaw Valley Mac, and, you know, others that might have some interest in this, so that they really can take a position.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, follow up on that. I agree with that because when I, pardon me, when I see the word "implementation plan", it means to me that within this five-year period, we're going to accomplish these things, and here's the plan as to how we're going to do it. And that doesn't seem to be the emphasis in what I'm getting out of the report. So, I agree with your comments.
Chuck?
Yeah, I just wanted to add, I'm still a little confused as to what the general flavor is with regards to this particular project, and it sounds like we're kind of, the way that it's being rolled out is a more passive kind of way here it is. We want you to tell us, but maybe the communication piece can be just a little bit more aggressive because I think in order for us to make a decision, we really need to know and have a gauge on what people think. And that means not only just for the folks that are there, but like Supervisor Ullrich said, you know, the interest folks that are going to be putting some investment in there. And also, what I'm hearing from Supervisor Montgomery is that we still need to prioritize, and maybe the prioritization is that piece that people can finally sink their teeth into and say yes or no. So, just words of suggestions.
Okay. Seeing no other questions or comments this time. This is a public hearing, so I'll open this item up to anyone in the public who would like to address it. Please state your name for the record.
Ellie Waller, Tahoe Vista resident. I appreciate the budget update today, and I'm hoping that we can get a new update at the July Tahoe meeting, which might lend us some more information on these redevelopment funds as the budgets go through. Does the county have a contingency for the redevelopment staff as well as this implementation plan? And hopefully, there'll be some information at that July meeting. On a more detailed couple of questions about the prioritization. In the current plan, there is $500,000 to lend assistance to the North Tahoe PUD for the Tahoe Vista Recreation Phase Two. I'm interested in why wasn't a sidewalk project considered in conjunction with that on National Avenue? As one of the stated goals says, "Improve streets and install other public improvements to facilitate pedestrian and vehicular circulation and minimize hazardous conditions." Sounds like a really good fit to have had that added to that project and looked at. And also, a National Avenue is a, by definition, a blighted area at Snow Creek, which was a former batch plant, which is now an SEZ, still a stream environmental zone. Another one of your goals is to help project areas that have inadequate water quality protection systems that do not comply with the threshold standards. Again, this would be a good fit. I generally think that the facade loans are great, but I do take issue with the Morelatos project. He has an outstanding CD for $35,973 for undergrounding overhead utilities that's over 10 years old, and I think that BMP should have been completed before a facade loan was let. Let's see. I think that's it. I'll look forward to seeing everybody in July.
Thank you.
If I could just respond to one point raised, the Tahoe Vista Recreation Area Project, our contribution is to the parking lot to supplement the boat launch area that goes up National Avenue. I'm not sure of the length. It's about 500 feet. And that entire frontage will, through this project, get new curb, better sidewalk.
Thanks, Jim. Next speaker, please.
Good morning. Ann Nichols, North Tahoe Preservation Alliance, 40-year resident of North Shore and a Realtor for 38 years. I'm concerned about the financial realism of the investments made by the redevelopment agency in Kings Beach, and it's been tough to get a handle on real estate values. As you know, they've dropped 40 to 50 percent. So, to stay on this and make prudent investments with public monies is a very tricky situation. And particularly with the S.K. Brown investment, which is 4.3 million by the redevelopment agency. He got $500,000 in predevelopment money, and then you guys bought the note because he was, had refinanced it, taken cash out, and then you're bailing him out of that money, which, you know, once you start doing this, then you got to chase it. And I don't think the property frankly is worth, and I do commercial property in Reno and Nevada and California, and I don't think it's worth more than about $2.5 million. So, we're really upside down on that now. And I'm wondering about the wisdom in supporting supposedly rich developers. They better be if they're going to do these big projects. The Ferrari property, they got $200,000 in predevelopment money, and I really would love to see support for the little guys in town, you know, the facade loans, the rehab financing. It seems, you know, that we should be, instead of focusing on these big projects with owners that may not even be able to get financing to do them. We also have a problem, of course, with supply. We've got too much commercial, too much office. Not that we don't need redevelopment, and I just would love to see like three appraisals when you do these deals, because it's a moving target right now. It's going down. So, that was my first issue, watching this as a property owner and business person. And then, you know, as far as where should we focus and prioritize? I think one of the things we're trying to do is get money for BMPs for county roads by supposedly partnering with private investors, right? Maybe we should just really focus on using some of the redevelopment money just for the rehabbing on county roads. I mean, that would be really an option. Then, we wouldn't have to worry about the ability of the economy to lend money to these guys, and whether the projects are going to happen. We don't have to worry about tying the sidewalks to the three-lane deal that, you know, is being held up. Anyway, I'm just thinking about some different ideas. And then, the other thing is, of course, the private sector dollars, the implementation plans, we need a community plan first, and we don't have that. And we need to get that done. It just seems we're doing the cart before the horse again. And, you know, anyway, I appreciate all your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the public who'd like to address this? Please state your name for the record.
Speckled Avenue. My address was there before. I didn't expect to have a chance to follow the great Ann Nichols, especially talking about money. But I happened to be at the county site yesterday on a traffic matter, talking to a friend. On the way in, I had been reading your agenda, because I knew I was going to be here, and I saw only 15 minutes for the subjects. I said, "How does it fit in for the public talking?" Because I knew some people were coming to tell it. Luckily, the front office woman, who's treated me very nicely over the years, or this year, while I was in my meeting, she made a copy of this presentation. It's that thick. I'm willing to pay for it. I didn't know. I wasn't asking for that. But you talk about transparency, and that's good. The other side was, I almost bought part of those properties you showed on the southwest shore. It was going to be $400,000. My neighbor was going to be a co-investor, and it was only part of one of those. Luckily, his ex-wife was renting there from the owner, so I stopped it. I didn't find another investor. And I told the owner, I said, "You know, I'd like to buy this, but by the time those sidewalks get in here, I'll be in a wheelchair." Now, what I hear this morning, I'll be lucky if I were in my last ambulance ride to see that sidewalk, but I'm really hoping for them. I love that idea. The guys did a great job as far as I could see in the planning of it. Talking about transparency, in my earlier talk, I was talking about the fact that I felt we were being, we were in a cone of silence on this subject for whatever reason. This subject here, you just told us, how many places you posted that? I never saw it. I didn't see it until I got that from the secretary. And the paper isn't working. When the NOP came out, it was in the back pages with all the foreclosures. We didn't see them. I hate to mention Ellie here, but we don't have a post office. They don't come around and hand us stuff like they do you. We have to walk down there, and mine gets so full of junk, because I live two places, that Ellie cleans it out for me. She throws away all the junk. So, it was in there. My notice wouldn't have been there because my mail comes to Roseville. But other people, all the neighbors are saying, "We didn't get the notice." And you don't have to send it out very wide, probably, I don't know, 1,000 feet maybe. So, nobody knew this NOP was coming until it fell right on us. And old Brett's been working on that. If you read his work back in May of 2008, before Obama gave us all this money, it's a great report. I didn't see it. And I'm retired. I read this stuff. I read about aluminum, but now I'm branching out. I even called the county, and they helped me with the air resource. I knew nothing about measuring. And congratulations to Placido, you've got a great report, May 6th, where you've brought the smog levels down. In the two parts of the county, it's gone down. Unfortunately, EPA is lowering the threshold for ozone down to 7.5. So, we're fighting a battle. So, how do you get this information out? We're trying email with, because most people.
Sorry, could you wrap up your?
Yeah, I was. Most people feel about the project I talked about, they said, "That's so stupid, it'll never happen." We had to find out, how do we get the information from the guys that put all this good stuff out from the last meeting? How do you get that out? Part of it was aimed at the second homeowners. I have to tell you, I didn't think it was getting there. And Dave McClure's got great stuff. He's been working on trees for his whole life. That wasn't getting out. So, we tried Facebook. It got out to the kids. In one week, we got 500 people clicking on a different page than the one that Roger had used. His wasn't moving at all. It wasn't getting to friends. The person who started it was in Sacramento and had no friends up there. The friend of mine who started hers, it went all over the place.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry, sir, you're gonna have to wrap up.
Yeah, I finished really, but we gotta find a way. Email may work to get this out. That's the only thing I know. I'm trying that now with the older people that can't use Facebook, or don't use it or don't know how to use it. Sorry, but you gotta tell us this stuff. It's a damn long county.
Great. I'd like to mention for the benefit of your, thank you, sir, for your comments, but for the benefit of everybody, the county does have a pretty robust webpage. And so you can get all, even can even get copies of board reports since late last Thursday for tonight's meeting, has all the detail in the staff reports. Also, the county has an electronic newsletter that you can sign up for to get this information. We cannot spam people by sending them things unless they sign up for it. So you do have to go into the webpage, you do have to sign up for the electronic news, and then that's the best way to keep up. Plus, look there for any upcoming information.
And if I just might follow up on that very quickly. When we post things publicly, they get posted at the post offices, they don't go in every individual post office box, they get posted at the library, they are posted in public places where we know people go on a routine basis. So don't expect to see something in your mailbox-
About a feet away, most of my neighbors didn't see it. I'm sorry, sir.
Yeah, I'm sorry, it's not a two-way conversation right now, I'm just trying to let you know where this information is available. On specific projects, if you are within, what, 300 feet, you will get a specific mailing to you as an individual. Otherwise, they're posted publicly. And we assume that people are interested in their communities and will look on the notice board at the post office, and they'll look on the board at the public library and inform themselves that way. And then, as Tom suggested, sign up for a specific email. So the county makes every effort to get the information out there. We do have a two-way street, and our county planners are always willing to send emails to people if they're contacted.
Continue with the public here. Is there anyone else from the public who'd like to address the board on this issue? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the board for consideration, which is the Resolution 2011-2016 Five-Year Implementation Plan.
If I might, Mr. Chair, just to offer up, I've heard a number of concerns from board members. Is it even separate from, this is a required update along a certain timeframe, does not keep the board from providing direction for staff to independently prepare an implementation plan with a little bit more vigor to it? And drafting that as a staff proposal, taking that out to the community, returning to your boards? That could also be an independent action.
Yeah, thank you. And that was actually gonna be part of my motion, that, you know, I move that we do adopt this resolution with the direction to staff, that we go forward, we prioritize our policies, our projects, make them implementable over the five-year term, and work with the community to identify those projects that are supported by the community, where we can work together to achieve some real outcomes that we all want to achieve. I don't know if that's a motion, but that's my motion.
If you say it is, it is. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt the resolution discussed for the five-year implementation plan, but in addition, continue to pursue the items that were discussed specifically. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Well, now adjourn, thank you, Jim. Now adjourn as the Placer County Redevelopment Agency and reconvene as the Placer County Board of Supervisors and take up our 1015 item, which is Community Development Resources Zoning Text Amendment, but with a recommendation by staff that it be continued to June 21st. Been moved and seconded to continue this item to June 21st at 10:30 5:00 AM. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Close. Motion carries. We will now take up our 10:30 timed item, which is Community Development Resources Engineering and Surveying Road Naming and Numerical Address System. Wes?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Wes Zicker, Engineering Surveying Department. This is a request for your board to consider an ordinance to replace some existing county ordinances, to revise the system that orders our road naming and addressing system. Excuse me. Rebecca Tavers, our senior engineer, has been working on this. Rick Eri, our engineering manager, is here as well for answering questions. With that, I'll turn it over to Rebecca and let her run through the presentation.
Thank you. Good morning. This item is Road Naming and Addressing System Ordinance Update, and that is, it begins on page 65 of your board packet. Also like to point out that on page 70, the actual text begins for that ordinance update. The Engineering and Surveying Department provides road naming and addressing services to residents of Placer County. For more than 25 years, let's see if I can advance here, the two documents that we've used for road naming and addressing have been Chapter 15, Article 15.08 of Placer County Code, also known as the Property Numbering System, and Board Resolution 86-125, the road naming policy. In order to improve emergency response for the public health, safety, and welfare of Placer County residents, staff identified the need to merge these two policy documents into one ordinance update for a cohesive, organized, and more efficient process for road naming and addressing. The updated ordinance is organized into road naming and numerical addressing sections. We have clarified and expanded upon the standards and the process. We added a section on definitions, and we also clarified and expanded on implementation. It's important to note that most new roads are assigned during the subdivision approval process. Costs included for this road naming is done with a plan check and mapping fees. The updated ordinance does formalize this process, and there is no change to the current fees for new roads. We did include a provision in this ordinance update for pending road names to be reserved in advance of a subdivision approval. However, residents have the option to request to name or rename existing roads. And that's where a proposed fee increase is. And it's only for renaming existing roads. This only happens two to three times a year. It's pretty rare. Our current fee, our current fee for this process, for these requests, is $145. That was established initially over 25 years ago, around 1986. So part of this ordinance update, we decided to propose an increase to this fee to be more in line with the time it takes staff to process these requests. These can be fairly time-consuming for staff. Some of the tasks required include research, field review, balloting affected parcels, attending a MAC, preparing a notice, staff report, and exhibits, attending a public hearing, updating the county records, and notifying the post office and emergency service providers of a road name change. For county-maintained highways, we estimate about 30 hours of staff time. And this equates to approximately $4,000. So with this updated ordinance, we are suggesting a total fee of about $2,000 plus the cost of signs, $175 per sign. This would be more consistent with a minor use permit application, and that current fee for an MUP ranges from $2,000 to $3,000. For public or private roads, we're proposing a total cost of $1,300. And that is roughly what a variance application costs today. With the updated ordinance, we propose to streamline the public hearing process. Today, the existing process for a county-maintained highway, it goes to the MAC, the Planning Commission, and then to the board. We propose to eliminate the Planning Commission step and go directly from the MAC to the board. For a public and private road, the existing process is there is no public hearing, but we are proposing one public hearing, the zoning administrator, to give the public an opportunity to also hear these types of road name change requests. This draft ordinance was circulated to the BIA, to pages, to the fire districts, and emergency response providers. We received only one comment, that was from North Tahoe Fire. Their comment was that there is a cost and effort to safety agencies when road names are changed. They have a cost for updating their mapbooks that they carry in each vehicle, as well as fire station wall maps. With that, the action requested today is, one, that your board adopt the attached ordinance to repeal and replace Chapter 15, Article 15.08 of the Placer County Code entitled "Property Numbering System" to include an increase in the road naming fee subject to automatic adjustments based on the Consumer Price Index. And two, to adopt the attached resolution, to rescind Resolution 86-125, Road Naming Policy. And with that, we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Jack?
Yeah, I'm not a map person here, but why would we only be charging for a percentage of the fee? My impression is, is that, it sounds like we're subsidizing a fee change. The second thing is, is if it does have an impact where it's impacting our emergency services to a certain degree, why wouldn't we want to recoup 100% of that?
This is a, the staff thought about that real hard. And what we're trying to balance is a cost to do this service versus a, if you will, a perception on the part of the public of the value of the service. To us, the equation to approximately the public perception of an MUP is a good level. Certainly happy to take direction from the board. I guess our feeling is, part of an answer to your question, is it, as a public service to assist people in getting this work done, the board could consider the fee we're proposing or direct us to do full cost recovery.
Thank you. Kirk?
In bringing this to the board, did you work with somebody in the CEO's office to bring this to the board, or was this just done internally?
The CEO's office has seen this item, as well as county council, we worked rather extensively with county council on it.
I want to drill down on some of these numbers. You're saying that currently, you estimate it takes approximately 30 hours of staff time for each review. You attribute a cost of almost $4,000. That's a fully burdened salary cost of $270,000 a year per employee to do these. You have 30 hours. If we divide what you estimate the cost to be of $3,893 by 30 hours, that's $129.77 an hour. Or a fully burdened cost of $270,000 a year. Or assuming a 40% burden, an actual take-home salary is somebody of $161,000, almost $162,000 a year. That we're paying to somebody to review road changes? Even your proposed fee, which you say doesn't cover all of the cost, even your proposed fee for the county-maintained right-of-way at $2,000, if it is in fact 30 hours of staff time, is a $66-an-hour person, almost a $67-an-hour person, or a fully burdened cost of almost $140,000 a year. For your private, but you privately maintain roads, it breaks out to a $90,000-a-year person. So what I'm wondering is, before we go down this road of adjusting a fee, have we really looked at what it's really costing us? Because if you're telling me that your analysis shows that those 30 hours of staff time equate to almost $4,000 in cost to the county, then I think we've got a bigger problem to deal with.
I could not agree with you more. Please correct me, Mr. Euler, if I do $4,000 at 30 hours, that equates to about $133 per hour. We base this estimate on various staff level costs ranging from $97 an hour from an engineering tech to about $198 for an engineering manager. So unless my, please correct me-
$198 an hour?
That's a fully burden for an engineering manager, yes.
Okay, so let's do that. $198 an hour, times your work year, which is 2,080 hours, that's a $411,000 employee.
That would be the fully burden, all benefits, and so on. So that's our charge-out rate that we use for employees.
So the burden is 40%, 43% is what our county burden is. So I'm gonna times the $41,000, times by 57%, which would be the salary component, .57, that's a take-home pay of $234,000 a year for that engineer.
I believe, Mr. Euler, if you account for an additional overhead cost of about 85%, which is what is, what we typically add to our cost for a charge-out rate. Yes, the direct benefits are approximately 40%?
43 is what I-
In addition to which, by the time we add in our rent, our other expenses, things that we are charged as a department, that's roughly another 85%.
There is no justifiable way that this board can be presented with staff costs showing that and ask us to pass a fee that is based so far outside of real-world, real-dollar costs to perform services. This is, this is People's Exhibit A as to why so much of what we do as government should be privatized or what have you. This is astronomical to me, that we are sitting here with a staff report that says the cost to review a road name change, the cost to review a road name change has a fully burdened cost of $270,000 a year. That's just so beyond the pale that I can't even begin to get my brain around it. And then, and then to step back from that and to realize that we're spending this time or ask, doing all of these changes over something that happens two to three times a year. It looks to me like we are proposing a solution in search of a problem. And when I start getting into some of the particulars of what we're being asked to allow for, maximum of two words, so I can think of any number of things right off the top of my head that go outright in my district. Easy pronunciation, simple spelling. Do we want to ascribe a grade level to something like that? I mean, I don't mean to be specious here, but easy pronunciation according to whom? Chateau, Cognac, Codeloc? We start drilling down on, "Road names that are geographically misleading shall not be permitted." Hilltop Road in a part of the county where there are no hills. Do we really need, I mean, this level of bureaucracy in something that is a relatively simple process? Do we really need, at the end of the day, does this really affect us that much? I mean, you cited, as your example, both in the PowerPoint and in the staff report, you cited in the interest to further improve emergency response. Do we have examples of emergency responders not being able to get to Rome Court? Or Willow Valley Place where I live, and yet there's not a Willow and it's not a valley? I'm not aware of our fire responders, our EMS responders, having problems getting to places by virtue of confusion of the names. I mean, if that's really a problem, and we're being asked to adopt a fee, I mean, I want to come back to the math on the fee. As you can tell, Wes, I have issues with this.
Mr. Euler, you raised a lot of points, and certainly a lot of validity to some of them. In terms of understanding the process that we're trying to regulate here, you're correct. There are a lot of existing street names that work. There are a lot that would be proposed or could be proposed. By the way, the standards that are incorporated in this proposed ordinance are virtually the same as in our current ordinance, so we're not proposing a dramatic change in that. Does it need regulation? You know, at this point in time, it's so hard to say. You're right, there hasn't been a problem because we've been applying these rules regularly. I will tell you from personal experience, I did a subdivision in San Diego where the county required me to name them after Filipino rivers. And that was a tongue-twister, let me tell you that. So obviously, we're open to direction from the board here. What we've done, in our opinion, is provide you a summary to basically combine the two existing ordinance and resolution. Nothing has dramatically changed. We think the process will be simplified and clarified for people who want to do it. The fee to us, the $4,000, I guess, again, equates to approximately $133 an hour average. Does it take 30 hours? The fee study we did, to have staff time to take any application, research it, go to a MAC meeting, which may involve travel time, prepare a staff report for your board- go to a MAC meeting, which may involve travel time, prepare a staff report for your board, show up here at your board meeting, and then follow up with the emergency service providers. Again, we, we had the same feeling, okay? 30 hours, $4,000, sounds like a lot of money. Which is why we're thinking, you know, to, to us, the public may appreciate more, something that equates to a minor use permit of about $2,000. Not full cost recovery, but something somewhat closer than what we are currently getting at $145 per request. Regarding the, the salary costs, again, these are the same numbers we used for your board a month or two ago, when we came forward with a SMARA fee. We used the same hourly rates to generate the cost study.
I believe that was a board meeting, I was unfortunately traveling.
I mean, I grant your math. It, it does calculate to some high numbers, but again, with all the overhead costs included, these are numbers that, that we're using currently as bill-out rates per the auditor's office. And I'd be happy to try and respond further if, if I can. Thank you.
Jennifer?
Thank you. I think Supervisor Euler has raised a number of serious and legitimate concerns with this, as has Supervisor Duran. We do, as I think we're all aware, have a county policy, that we do have full cost recovery. That's what we strive for. However, Supervisor Euler's concerns are probably equally legitimate, and I believe need to be addressed. My suggestion, if the rest of the board is willing to do this, is that we table this issue for today. Is there any particular need that we would need to act on this today?
No.
Okay. My suggestion would be that we table this issue, that your department come out and have individual meetings with the supervisors to understand their concerns more fully, and hopefully address them. They may not all be addressed. We may have the same discussion when we're back here a couple months from now, or a couple weeks from now, or whatever that timeframe is. So, that's my suggestion, that we table this, and we move it to a future date uncertain. That's a motion, by the way.
Second.
And under discussion. Thank you, Supervisor Montgomery, for the suggestion. And I would like to have a broader discussion with the CEO's office in one of our board meetings, where we outline all the costs associated, in what Wes says is what, as departments, they are directed to include into their hourly costs to cover overhead and other things. I mean, I, I, I don't understand the math. I've, I've employed a lot of people over the last 23 years, and I know how I develop my burdened costs, with putting together my salary budget. I know what I include in my overall operating costs on a, on an FTE basis. I know how I do it, and I've never come anywhere close to these kinds of numbers on an individualized basis. And so, I guess I need a better understanding of, you mentioned the auditor's office, of what, how it is you, as a department head, are directed to allocate these individual costs, and what's driving an average hourly cost of $130 an hour for something, I mean, we just improved a bunch of merit increases, and, you know, the average, Rick Padilla, heck of a guy, sheriff sergeant, he's $42 an hour. And, and, you know, obviously, that's just his pay. That's not his fully burdened cost. And with, with the sheriff's department, unlike with the regular county employees, at about a 43% burden for benefits, payroll tax, all the rest, the sheriff's department's even higher, it's in the 50s. So, obviously, he costs us more than that. But here's a sheriff sergeant, sergeant who's fully burdened cost is going to be somewhere closer to $65 an hour, and yet, I got you sitting here telling me that, that somebody who does, who reviews road signs costs us $130 an hour. And I just need to reconcile that in my head. I just need to see how these numbers break down, because right now, I'm having a real tough time with this. That's all.
And if I-
And that's not incumbent upon you, by the way. That's, that was my comment in relation to a better understanding, particularly as we're going into our budgets.
Well-
A better understanding for how these actually translate.
Good. And I, I don't want to, I want all of us to feel comfortable, we can continue our comment, but we have a motion to continue to a date uncertain, so if there's a second to that. We don't have to vote now, but-
Second.
Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry, you're way ahead of me. So, then with that, Tom, yes?
Oh, just back on the cost accounting. The county had a number of practices in terms of how it, in different departments calculated fees, and so it was through the assistance of the auditor's office to come up with standardized fee policy. Be more than happy to bring that back to your board at a future meeting, go over how that's developed, and what those costs are. And I do want to correct Wes, although attempting not to throw you under the bus. We received this in the normal course of a submittal, not that it was fully communicated to us, in terms of the county exec's office. And I know county council looks at it for legality or form. Obviously, this is something that had, had been brought to our attention. We were directed to have those conversations with the board members earlier than this.
So, there is a motion and a second to continue the item to a date uncertain, with specific requests that I think are pretty clear. So, for the public, with that motion, the item would then be noticed publicly as a normal agenda item, at the time that it's ready for presentation, so.
Yeah, and it was noticed as a public hearing today, so it would have to be re-noticed if it's to a date uncertain.
Thanks, Chair. Okay, motion second on the floor. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Let's go to our next department item, which is Facility Services, Dry Creek Fire Station, Addition and Alterations, and Joel. Page 121, by the way.
Thank you, Chairman Wygant, and members of your board. Again, Joel Swift, Deputy Director for Facility Services Department. With me as well, our Capital Improvements Director, Roben Holtz, and our Capital Improvements Project Manager on this project, Lisa James. It's my pleasure to present to you, aboard this package of recommendations supporting the improvements at Dry Creek Fire Station Number 100, which is also known as Project Number 4817. Specifically, the requested actions are as follows. First is to approve the plans and specifications, authorize staff to solicit the bids for the project. Second is to approve a resolution authorizing the Director of Facility Services, or as designee, to award and execute the contract in amount, and not to exceed of $479,461, upon review and approval by county council and risk management, as always. Delegating authority to approve any necessary change orders, consistent with the County Purchasing Manual, as well as Section 20142 of the Public Contract Code. And also to take all actions necessary to grant and record a utility easement for the water service for Cal-American Water Company. The third action is, excuse me, to approve the attached budget revision, which shifts appropriations in the amount of $29,184 from Capitol Projects, Miss Lays' project, to Project Number 4817, the Dry Creek Fire Station Number 100. And just very briefly on the background on the project, it consists of improvements that allow the fire station to house expanded apparatus bays for, in particular, the new water tender that they received last year. That includes 408 square feet, feet of an addition to the existing apparatus bays, accessibility alterations to meet ADA, and for the restrooms, fire alarm, fire sprinkler system improvements that are required with the expansion, and approximately 1,100 linear feet of water line to support the improvements to the fire station, and as well, concrete apron, paving, parking, and related site improvements. Our contract architects, Madsen, Flathman, Dameron, and Babcock, have completed the bid documents. Their estimate of construction cost is $429,528. Again, that's probable construction cost. And the total project includes an exhaust system that was already completed under a separate contract, the design, project management, permit fees, the construction administration, and contingencies. In order to fully fund this project, the attached budget revision is required, shifting the appropriations, as I mentioned, from the Miss Lays' project to Project 4817. And ultimately, in order to proceed, we, is our recommendation that your board approve the plans and specifications, approve the resolution, and as well, approve the budget revision. Staff, as I mentioned, is here available to answer any questions your board may have regarding this request.
Thanks, Joel. Questions, comments? Jack?
Yeah, just one question on item number three, the $29,184. That's just a shift of monies into the fund. It doesn't include any additional design modifications, or anything like that.
You're absolutely correct. That's just to fund the additional cost of providing that water line, construction cost.
Seen no other questions, comments? Anyone from the public wish to address this item? It's a pleasure of the board. It's been moved and seconded to approve the plans and specifications just discussed, the resolution authorizing the Director of Facility Services to proceed, and a budget revision. So, just for clarity, Ann, if we could have a roll call vote.
Duran?
Yes.
Holmes?
Yes.
Euler? Montgomery?
Yes.
Wygant?
Yes. Motion passed us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's quickly finish off the remaining two department head items, and those folks can all get back to work, before we go to our last timed item at 11. So, Health and Human Services, we have contracts, monetary cooperative agreements to discuss, and then grant agreements.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, and board members. Jim Gandley, Assistant Director for Health and Human Services. I'd like to just take a moment to do a formal introduction of Rebecca Malott, our new Senior Fiscal Manager. She's been with the department for a few months, but this is her first opportunity to come before you as the board and make a presentation. Rebecca comes to us from Shasta County. Shasta County, as many of you are aware, transitioned over the last few years to a Health and Human Services Department, and Rebecca was with them all through that transition. She brings a very strong background in social services to our department, and probably is the best testament of all. I got several "you really owe me now" type calls from Shasta County, as we hired her away a few months ago. So, with that, I'd like to turn it over to Rebecca for her presentation today. Thank you.
Thanks. Welcome, Rebecca.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, good morning. I am before you today to request authorization for the Director- Oh, thank you. Director of Health and Human Services, with concurrence of the CEO, County Council, and Risk Management, to execute the yearly renewal of 68 specified contractual agreements and subsequent amendments, as well as applications, grants, and revenue contracts under $50,000, non-monetary cooperative agreements. The super resolution process is a time and money-saving arrangement, first approved by your board on October 23, 2001. For the past nine years, this process has successfully been utilized to create efficiencies, as well as redirect much-needed resources, from administrative overhead to direct client service delivery. There is a variety of vital and often mandated services provided to the residents of our community in these agreements, such as AIDS/ HIV counseling, veterinary, disaster preparedness, inpatient psychiatric care, medical services, and adoption planning. In this resolution, revenue agreements total 1.2 million, and expenditure agreements total 3.4 million. Almost 90% of the expenditure agreements are funded through outside sources, such as federal and state revenue, with a little more than 10% coming from the general fund. All expenditure agreements executed as a result of this resolution will remain within 10% of the prior term's annual amount. However, total expenditures covered in this request are anticipated to remain unchanged from the prior year. As in past years, the following criteria were used to select these agreements. They're recurring agreements with a total contract amount of less than $250,000 each, agreements to be executed with effective beginning dates during fiscal year 2011/12, and agreements that do not currently require competitive bid or proposal process. This resolution also allows for signature authority up to 10% of the initial amount for subsequent amendments, should funding streams and/or mandated service demands change throughout the year. In addition to the resolution, authorization is requested to submit applications and execute grants and revenue contracts of less than $50,000, and execute non-monetary cooperative agreements, such as memorandum of understanding, in order to expedite the acceptance of potential revenue and grant-funded operational agreements. This authorization grants Health and Human Services the flexibility to quickly respond to much-needed revenue opportunities that otherwise would not be attainable due to regular procedural timelines. On a final note, approval of this resolution in no way obligates the county to move forward with any individual contract agreement, should programmatic needs or available funding change. This action simply continues to support proven, effective, and efficient procedures that ultimately assist us in providing timely implementation of necessary services to the residents of Placer County. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Jack?
Yeah, I really appreciate your presenting this, and the way, and packaging, and trying to reduce costs, you know, on a broad scale. Having just recently been taking my seat, I'm unfamiliar with how the process works, but I just want to make sure that in adopting this at one time, you know, a global kind of, of adoption of the document, and the projects and the contracts, are we having still the same level of oversight on the actual contracts? Are we losing anything in grant qualifications, or things that we have to be really, really drilled down on?
I would say no. The internal process that we would do for these contracts is the same that we would do for any that we would bring before your board. CEO, Risk Management, County Council's still very involved in the process, and still would be reviewing every single one of these.
See no other questions or comments? Anyone from the public have any questions or comments? Seen none, bring it back to the board.
Move approval.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve recommendations, recommendation by staff just discussed. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And item B is grant agreement. Maureen? Grant renewal with HUD.
Yes, thank you. Maureen Bammon, again. The Shelter Plus Care Program was established in 2004 to reduce homelessness in Placer County by providing rental assistance, particularly for those people that had mental illness. The only thing I want to point out is that this program, when it started, had seven units, and because of staff's work and community support, we have quadrupled the number of units that we have now, so that we can serve, we have 29 units, and we will serve 33 individuals and families in this next year. There is a match required. It's an in-kind match, and the resources are budgeted in our 11/12 budget. And with that, because of time, I'll be happy to answer questions, but recommend approval of the contract renewal.
I don't see any questions. Anyone from the public, questions or comments? Seen none? Thank you, Maureen. Bring it back to the board.
Move approval. Second.
Moved and seconded to approve staff recommendation as regards to the HUD grant agreement just discussed. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
And Ken, Public Works.
Good morning, Chairman, board members. My name's Ken Graham, Department of Public Works. In this next item, we're asking you to approve an extension of five lists of qualified firms for professional services on various Public Works projects. In addition to that, we're asking you to renew blanket purchase orders with 15 various firms, and an amount, an aggregate amount of $3 million to do all this continuing work. June 2008 was when you approved the original list of firms, and you also approved those blanket purchase orders at that time. Those lists are set to expire in, well, some of them are in May, and some of them are in June of this year. We still have a need for those services to keep our projects moving forward. All of the BPO, or all these blanket purchase orders have options to renew them, and so we're looking to exercise that, that option. We're working with procurement services to phase in the development of new qualified lists over time. They take, they're very time-intensive, and so rather doing them all at once, we want to kind of phase them over a longer period of time. All of these purchase orders are funded by our various projects, that are funded by various federal, state, and local grants, for typically transportation projects, but they're all for, for project-specific reasons. They're not dollars that can be used for general services. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Questions? Seen none? Anyone from the public, questions or comments? Seen none? Thanks, Ken. Bring it back to the board.
Move.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve staff recommendation. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Ken. We'll now go to our last timed item, which is Facility Services, excuse me, Placer County Fairgrounds update, and Mary Dietrich is going to present that for us. Morning, Mary.
Chairman, members of the board, Mary Dietrich, Facility Services. I'm here this morning to provide your board with an update on the Placer County Fairgrounds and the operating agreement that the county is negotiating with the Fair Association. In the audience today are representatives from the Fair Association. Chris Robles is here from the city of Roseville, and based on the members of the audience at this late time of the day, I presume that there are citizens who are also very much interested in this topic. I would also add that since March of this year, I have been keeping contact, and I have a log of all of the people who have contacted the county, through the, either the city, county executive office, or directly through me. I've contacted each and every one of them personally, through phone calls, or through direct letters, and have contacted everyone who wanted to be apprised of this particular update. As you're aware, as we're all aware, there was a grand jury report. I forget this part of it. Forget this part of it. There we go. As you're aware, there was a grand jury report published earlier this year, and in that report, the grand jury criticized both the county and the Fair Association, the Fair Association for its enlargement of the Speedway without first receiving construction permits, and the county for its management of our operating agreement that governs the fairgrounds and its functioning. Formal responses to the grand jury have been provided by your board, by the Department of Facility Services, and the Community Development Resources Agency. But this update is intended, as you guys are aware, that's a very formal response to findings, and I think at Supervisor Duran's request, we were asked to provide an update that had a broader discussion of the fairgrounds and this relationship and the contract, and so that's what I'm here today to do. The Placer County Fairgrounds is located on sixty-one acres, and it's located, oops, let's go back. To the vicinity map? Oops. Sorry. Ah. It's located on sixty-one acres of land located within the unincorporated boundary of the city of Roseville. It's bounded on the east by the Union Pacific Rail Lines and Washington Boulevard, the Los Cerritos Neighborhood Association on the south, the Caseburg Kingswood Neighborhood Association on the north and west, and a commercial development in Junction Boulevard on the north. This wasn't always the case, however, and as you can see from the aerial photo that dates back to nineteen thirty-eight, back then, the fairgrounds was located on the very north edge of town. The property was initially purchased in nineteen thirty-five by civic-minded Roseville businessmen who were intent on developing a fairgrounds in Roseville, and they were watching the same sort of effort that was occurring up here with the Gold Country Fair and the effort to establish a fair in Auburn, and I think there was perhaps a bit of competition to have their fair and fairgrounds down in the south portion of the county. Between nineteen thirty-seven and nineteen forty-one, various lots of the Bonnie Bray acre subdivision were serially sold to the county after improvements were constructed on the parcels. There was an opportunity for the Business Association to be able to secure state funds to construct capital improvements at fairgrounds, and so that construction occurred. Some of that's apparent in the photograph here from nineteen thirty-eight. As the construction was completed, various parcels were then transferred to ownership by the county. Our records show that in nineteen thirty-eight, the Fair Association was created by those businessmen, and by action of the Board of Supervisors, they were required to operate and maintain and upkeep this property. And based on my records and as best as I can tell, the Placer County Fair Association has managed the property for its seventy-four acres. Moving forward to the fifties in this area, we can see some of the construction that's occurred. There would be Jones Hall and various ag barns, and I think what may be a rodeo stadium. Records indicate that the Speedway that is located on the property was constructed in nineteen fifty-five as a quarter-mile dirt track for jalopy and super-modified race cars, and at that time, it also doubled as the stadium. So you can see that here in a nineteen fifty-eight photograph, and this would be the kind of cars perhaps that were running on the track at the time. Moving forward to nineteen seventy-two, the track was paved and renamed the All-American Speedway, and during this era, it hosted many motorsport events, including enduro races, the Rose Classic, and all types of cars and vehicles that were popular here on the West In December two thousand and six, the Fair Association notified the county of its intent and its board's direction to approve a project to improve the track's safety characteristics. At the time of that notice, the work was underway and was subsequently completed in two thousand and seven. The aerial here is at scale, and it shows the before and after conditions of the track following the Speedway modifications. Since the track modifications in two thousand and seven, the city of Roseville has noted an increase in noise complaints, and with that, in April two thousand and seven, city and county officials, as well as representatives from the Fair Association, worked with the neighborhood to address the concerns and to try to mitigate some of the comments and complaints that were received. As a result, the Fair Association implemented operational changes to the Speedway and also contracted with J.C. Brandon and Associates to perform an assessment of noise reduction options for the Speedway. That work included collection of continuous and short-term noise monitoring to determine the condition with race and without race events, and recommended construction of a tall noise barrier to achieve noise reductions within the surrounding neighborhoods. While the Association did construct barriers, the complaints for the noise levels have The fairgrounds today hosts between seventy-five and eighty thousand visitors annually. It is the location of our Placer County Fair that has been running for many, many, many years. It hosts numerous exhibitions and community-based local organization activities, of course, the Speedway racing. There are permanent tenants that reside on the property. Some of the local communities find the fairgrounds and the buildings their home for meetings. As well, the county has leases with both the city of Roseville and the state of California for the armory. The SPCA is on lease property that is to the city, and that is one of their tenants. The fairgrounds and the Fair Association for the last three years has been operating at effectively a break-even point. Their expenses and revenues run at approximately one point three million dollars, and of this money, about fifty percent comes from racing revenues. Fairs and exhibitions has identified county fairs as economic engines that result in sales tax, transparency and occupancy tax, and local spending activities. And based on a report in about two thousand and nine, the county fair was estimated to generate about twelve million dollars in economic benefit to the local community. The management of the fairgrounds is achieved through an operating agreement with the Fair Association. During its seventy-four years of management, the Fair Association has brought its unique expertise to conduct the Placer County Fair. They've operated the fairgrounds as a successful commercial venture, providing a venue for community activities as well as entertainment, and has fostered a cooperative relationship with the city and the county in managing this property. They're presently operating under a contract with the county, and that contract continues to exist pursuant to extension provisions that are provided in the agreement. Looking at the current agreement that we are operating under, the focus of that agreement is the aspects to run and operate the county fair, and really, its attendant administrative responsibilities relative to that. We have been in negotiations with the Fair Association for a number of years to negotiate a new, more cooperative, more comprehensive agreement for the Speedway, for the fairgrounds, and I would say that except for the provisions related to the Speedway, the agreement is nearly finalized. We have provisions that we are in agreement in in terms of operating and maintaining the fairground property, provisions for the Fair Association to conduct the fair on behalf of the county in compliance with CDFA requirements, their budget and reporting provisions, requirements for capital projects that would hopefully avoid the kind of situation that we had with the track, and participation in outreach meetings. Relative to the Speedway, there are tentative agreements on provisions relating to that portion of the facility, which include limitations on operating hours for the Speedway, limitations on days of use, compliance with requirements for a noise study, and preparation of an operating manual containing the best practices. And I would say that the existing agreement has no limitations on the operating hours or days of use relative to the Speedway. It simply provides the Fair Association with the property to operate it in their best judgment, effectively so long as they are providing the county with a state fair, or not a state fair, a county fair. The Association has notified staff and informed us that they are again going to be contracting with J.C. Brandon and Associates to perform a follow-up to the two thousand and seven noise study, and it will address the following items. They're going to review and update the sensitive receptor locations that were identified in the first study. They're going to review previously recommended noise control measures. They're going to evaluate the effectiveness of the attenuation measures, and conduct new noise studies and collect new data based on typical race events, operations in the pit, and actually on the Speedway, as well as at the national event in October. Subsequent phase of the study is proposed to collect additional data if need be, to perform analysis and modeling, to prepare noise recommendations, and a noise level monitoring program. In order to capture the noise data from the representative races, including the national event in October, that study will not be able to be completed until the fall of two thousand and eleven, but the hope is, is that as they're collecting data in these earlier phases, that recommendations, preliminary recommendations for some noise mitigations and actions that the Fair Association can take would be forthcoming in the meantime. The Fair Association has indicated publicly and to the county that it is committed to addressing the community concerns regarding the operations at the Speedway. To this end, they are negotiating with us in good faith regarding the agreement, both the general operating provisions and the provisions that would govern the Speedway. They're willing to participate in meetings with the city, county, and community on this issue. They are contracting for the noise study, and they're voluntarily agreeing to restrict the days and hours of operation to be able to comply more closely with those negotiations that are ongoing with the county. They purchased a new public address system with directionally oriented speakers, and are making modifications to the existing sound barrier to improve its noise attenuation. And depending on the results of the noise study and some of the preliminary findings that the study may have, the Association has also contemplated the use of an FM band communication in their pit area, extension of a sound wall on turn two, and modifications to the pit viewing area. I think that is just the kind of things right at this point, without having conducted the study, that they envision may be very helpful with regard to attenuating the noise. The Fair Association has managed the property for the county, on behalf of the county, for seventy-four years, and for most of that time, we've had an exceptional relationship. They've delivered and conducted the county fair, and for the most part, I believe that they have had a peaceful coexistence with the neighborhoods. We are hoping, and our goal is to develop an operating agreement that can address the concerns and facilitate the continued coexistence with the neighborhoods that are in Roseville. And as you can see, based on the vicinity map that we have here now in two thousand and ten, there are quite a few neighborhoods that are located now in the area. The next step in the process include receiving the input and direction from your board, listening to the community as they may have input on this, as well as the city. We'd like to finalize the agreement with the Fair Association on its basic provisions. We'd like to complete the noise study, finalize provisions pertaining to the Speedway, and ultimately, at the appropriate time, finalize the provisions that would govern that aspect of the operating agreement, and clearly participate with any community meetings and outreach efforts that are deemed valuable to facilitating a peaceful coexistence, if you will. So with that, that's my formalized presentation, and I'm available to answer any questions that you might have.
Check.
Yes, Mary, and Mary and Jim, I want to thank you for moving on this. I know this has been, for some time, there's been quite an issue with what's been going on with regards to the fair and the Fair Association, specifically the Speedway, and you guys have put together, we've had a lot of meetings, and we've put together a lot of data, and had a lot of discussions between the time, you know, that I came on in January, even before the grand jury report came out. Couple of things that I think are not only important to consider, but also, I think, necessary pieces of this. I, a timeline, you know, I think as soon as possible, we need to get some type of a time schedule as to when these certain things are going to happen. That's very important. If you don't have a time, we can't aim for when, you know, and we can't coordinate with the specific outreach groups to get the information out and also get the input back to us as well. The second thing is, is I'm a little bit concerned about the actual agreement itself, specifically with regards to teeth, you know. What happens when hypothetically, we go beyond a certain period of time that we're supposed to, operations are supposed to cease? How do we, you know, what is our involvement in that? And I think we do need to have some type of consequence, and, you know, that goes beyond, you know, just a discussion, perhaps, you know, and I don't know what the logistics would be, but maybe some type of onsite someone to have a discussion, to just monitor some certain things. I think that's going to be really important. The second thing is with regards to the complaint process, you know, that's really important on multiple levels. You know, here we are as a owner of property, we're leasing the property or leasing the responsibilities. We really need to drill down on, you know, how that process works, and also, from the association's standpoint, I know that there have been some challenges in the past with regards to handling those complaints. I think it's important that we understand and fully reflect the conditions of the complaint process in the operating agreement. I think that's important. The other piece of it is going to be with regards to how do you envision this occurring? We're going to be collecting data, you know, and it's important to, for everybody to understand here, that we're working right now with three-year-old data, okay? So I guess I need a little bit more understanding, and maybe there's, if there's anyone from Brandon or the Fair Association can address this question, is to how comprehensive, in addition to the study that was performed in two thousand and seven, what additional features are going to be added to it? And second of all, if we do find something that needs to be rectified, is that going to be included in the operating agreement on a moving-forward basis? And again, with regards to teeth, how do we ensure that those things get done? And I'm going to use this as an example. The last two thousand and seven sound study recommended the building of a sound wall. The sound wall was built, but there's a slot about this wide and about a hundred feet long, and that, in my opinion, defeats the whole purpose of the sound wall. So we really need to have a better, you know, much beyond dialogue, we have to have a better understanding of what the conditions are, and we need to really drill down on that, you know. So I don't mean to manipulate everybody's time here, but those are the concerns that I have, and those concerns are also come part and parcel, some of the things that I've heard through various community photographs. I've heard through various community folks that I've talked to that have, that want input and want to see some things change here. So, you know, that being said, thank you for what you've done. Just so the folks that are in the audience, I will be having a subset of these, of this information and community meetings ongoing. I know Director Goldman is going to be scheduling those, so we can make the presentation to the community in general, and again, solicit information and input for the folks that aren't able to be here today, or, you know, can't, couldn't make it, or, you know, just it's easier for them to receive the information in district. So, thank you.
Jennifer?
Thank you. And I just have a couple of really sort of clarifying questions at this point. Mary, I think you said that it operates at a break even at about $1.3 million a year. I believe the state has indicated that they're not going to be funding county fairs anymore. What are those impacts financially, and what does that do to the operating model of this facility?
As I understand it, and I'm sure that there's representatives from the fair, but I think that the magnitude of the cost or the contributions from the state are about $200,000. And I understand that if it isn't, hasn't been withdrawn from the budget, this year it will be certainly over the next couple of years. In talking with the executive director of the fair, they're obviously very concerned about this. They're looking at business models, and I know that Joan is working very, very hard to try and promote the fair, promote the fairgrounds, its use of its properties to its maximum to be able to make up that shortfall. At this point in time, I don't know that they have a clear path to exactly what that impact to their budget will be.
So at this point, then, we don't have any clarity on the financial stability of the fair and the fairgrounds itself long-term?
Relative to that particular funding, that would be the case.
Okay. And the 2007 noise study, was that done before or after the expansion of the track?
It was done after the expansion of the track, but it was also done before the construction of the noise barrier. So we expect that as the study goes forward, right upcoming, that it would take into account the barriers that they have constructed, albeit that there are these penetrations in it that were not recommended by the noise consultant.
Do we have studies prior to 2007 to compare the older track versus the newer track, and just what those different sound levels were?
I don't think that we have anything that is just like this study. We will be looking, there obviously has been a great deal of development in the city of Roseville, and there may be noise studies and so forth that are able to capture data and information, and we certainly will be looking at that. But the county's not in possession of any studies that would have looked at it, and I'm not aware that the fair association has either.
Okay. And that actually brings me to my next question, which is, obviously, there's been a lot of development there since 1938. I see that the city of Roseville has approved a lot of things around this track. Does the city, to the best of our knowledge, have any noise studies that, prior to the expansion of the track and post-expansion of the track? Because obviously, you know, they approved development around the track certainly before 2007. My question is, have they approved development around the track post-2007? And are there sound studies pre and post that expansion date?
I think I need to let Chris respond to whether or not projects have been developed post-expansion. They have adopted a new general plan, their 2025 plan. It indicates that it does have background in existing noise sources as part of that study. It wasn't available online, and I haven't yet received that information. And it did speak about the noise generated from the track. Their noise element identified the primary impacts of noise to the Roseville community as being their traffic and the rail lines that run through their community, and identified the track as a seasonal and not, I would say, not overly significant impact in noise.
Okay. We identified, or I should say, you identified some certain benefits that accrued to the county outside of the actual operation of the facility itself, and that was TOT, retail, some other dollars that come in through that. Some of the arguments that I know some community members have made is that there are detrimental impacts to the value of their homes. Is there any way to quantify that or to identify what that may or may not entail?
I'm not familiar with any methodology that would do that. I think frankly, this issue gets a little mixed up with a really down economy, that I don't know how you could divide out the two. I think as most of us have experienced, there's been a significant drop in many of our property values. In Roseville, I don't know how that would be, I don't know if you could make a correlation to that.
Okay. And then last, you said something which raised a little bit of a red flag, and I just hope that you could expand on it a little bit. You said, except for provisions relating to the Speedway that the contract was moving forward. Can you just expand on that a little bit?
We have drafted provisions within the agreement that are under discussion and, for the most part, agreed upon. The fair association and the county have effectively slowed down our discussions, knowing that the grand jury report was coming out, that there was a great deal of community interest. Wanted to frankly have this update and hear direction from your board. I think with direction, we could move forward and have proposed limited operating hours, or more limited operating hours and hours of operation and so forth, that I think that the county and the fair association are in basic agreement on. Again, we didn't want to get ahead of ourselves in terms of this public discussion in any direction that you might provide.
Thank you.
I just want to follow up on the question that Jim asked, and I do want to thank both county staff and the fair association, because we have been in discussions with regards to the status of the particular agreement. And the comments that I made today, the fair association is full, well aware of them. But we're progressing towards this particular angle of trying to get, you know, moving in a way to get the agreement done. But then we also have these other issues that have come up that have kind of make us take a step back, because the way that I understand it, that, you know, we do another sound study, we've got additional things and recommendations that we have to incorporate into that particular agreement. But at the same time, the fair association has told us verbally that they will treat the conditions as if they were already bound by them and move forward on that. So, correct?
That's my understanding.
Tom?
If I might, just to make it clear on one of the statements about the economic impact of the fair, it's actually on the city of Roseville. We have no TOT, we have no sales tax in that area. So I think Mary Dietrich was speaking of the community, it was not the county. So I don't want anybody to think that somehow we are the beneficiaries of all that wealth that is created by the fairgrounds. The other thing is, speaking to the conditions that haven't been spoken to, it'd be good if a larger aerial was put up on the side, if you wouldn't mind, Greg. I don't care which one you pick, but shows the whole fairgrounds. A lot of the focus of the whole fairgrounds, not just racetrack. Thank you. That's fine. As you'll see, that there is a significant amount of inventory and use on that fairgrounds. It deals with the buildings, the community-type activities, the fair itself, that is, at least, we have not heard any negative comments to those kind of operations. The fairgrounds have spent quite a bit of effort conducting the business of everything else but the Speedway itself. So I don't want that to be lost on the board, that much, at least, I think the complaints that we've heard in the interaction with the city, which we've sat down many times in the past few years to talk with about these issues and collaborated with them, has been about the raceway itself. And so there is trying to get the rest of the business, the fair association, done so the rest of the facilities are out there, can be managed, is important as well.
If I could just ask a follow-up question on that, Tom. Thank you for clarifying about the TOT and the revenue, the other tax revenues. So if the county isn't getting the TOT, and the county isn't getting that tax benefit, what benefit does accrue to the county from this arrangement?
I'd say by, well, first of all, we have somebody who operates the fair much cheaper than the county could. Secondly, the region as a whole, not just the city of Roseville, but I mean, the region as a whole is a beneficiary of having an asset like this that has quite a bit of community soul in it, in terms of, look at these businessmen going back 70-some-odd years, and figured out how to bring something as an asset to the region as a whole. So that's not neglected. Many times, especially budgetary discussions, we boggle down into revenues and expenditures, but there's more fabric to life than just revenues and expenditures, and this is part of the fabric of life. It almost sounds philosophical.
Wow, it sounded like a 7-Up ad or something.
Oh, go get my budget book.
Thank you, Mary. Want to make sure everybody from the public who wants to speak will get a chance to speak, but I think first I'd like to invite someone from the fair association to make a presentation if they so choose, followed by city of Roseville. I see Chris back there, so. Someone from the fair association. Wayne?
Wayne Vineyard, chairman of the Hot Spot Fair, President of the Fair. I might say, on behalf of the fair association, we do everything we can to be a good neighbor. I've been on the fair for 35 years. I didn't quite start in '38, but I came in '42 when I was seven, and then the fair shut down, so I didn't get to show in '48 until '45, I think it was, when they restarted. And so I've been around. But we, I'm more involved in the livestock area, and anytime we had any complaints during the fair, we had complaints from the residents, flies, smells, because we have livestock. So the fair moved, we moved stuff out within a day or two after the fair to try to clean it up. We have a pesticide come in and spray to keep the flies down. So we do things when we, to try to be good neighbors. The racing part of it, we had been sound problems since I'd been there, trying to be good neighbors. When the county got their first sound meters, probably 30 years ago, health department, I think it was, guy came down, I went with him, and we went around and took sound samples next street, two blocks away, which was strange. It was quiet at the first street, two blocks away, it was noisier than it was at the, close to the racetrack. The sound is funny. You probably, Jack, probably get residents sometimes complain this way and sometimes that way, depends on where the wind blows.
Just to state for the record, if you look up in that corner there, that farthest left corner, I lived there for 12 years, so I'm very familiar with.
But it was strange, but on the other hand, we took sound meters, readings of the racetrack. Train goes by, goes off the chart. Way noisier than I think. People don't hear the train because they're used to it. Truck goes by, was noisier than our race. We have, as saying that we have shortened our, we done by 10 o'clock. We have shortened our time, the race is over at 10. If it's not over, it's over. That's our policy. We have switched the, some of the super-modified cars that make more noise, we have moved them up and raced them sooner, so the quieter ones will be towards the end, so people want to go to bed and be quieter. So we have tried to do anything that we can to quiet. We bought a new PA system this year, even if we couldn't afford it, because the sound from the PA system is what you hear across the street, across the track. Sometimes when that wind's right, that sound system go. If you get the sound speakers so they can hear, then everybody else can hear it. So we got, we tried to buy directional sound systems so it would go stay there. We still got, I think, some problems with it. We are thinking, as she mentioned, FM communication to the pit area, because you've got to tell the pit area when to come. You put a speaker out in a pole, it goes over. So we are going to try another, if it feasible. The sound barrier we put in, soon we found, the sound people said the sound barrier would help if we put this in, so we put it in before Bill McQuarrie's race was, he was coming, and we wanted to be quiet. So we went there, and one of our board members brought his staff in there and did it, to try to keep that sound from going out, because we knew when the bigger cars come, they're going to be noisier. So on another subject, money. You know, we get from the state operating money, about $200,000, we get $130-some-odd-thousand, plus we get insurance, and comp insurance cheaper, and all this figure, and the audit and stuff that mounts about $200,000 in our general sense. Plus, we get money, or have got money, to build buildings, to fix, maintain these buildings, which I think is going to dry up. We, the fair association, has been talking about this for a number of years, because they switched the source of money from racehorses to the general fund, and you see what happened to the general fund, the $32 million got cut out. And so we was trying to think of a way that we could stay in business, and the race is one way. Racing track makes money. We, when we get it paid off, we spent a lot of money on that track, a lot of it was donated. We had a lot of people come forward and did a lot of work free. We, the association, put in all the money we did, we did borrow some money, we about got it paid off. We've kind of been in a financial situation because of the grand jury, and the state thing kind of hit at the same time. The bank says we had a loan with the bank on a thing, and a line of credit. The bank said, no more line of credit. Are you going to be there tomorrow or not? You're not getting any state money, can you survive? So it made it tough. It's, but I think we can make it. We are cutting out, like every other fair in the state is doing, cutting anything that's not, that can be cut, is cut. One fair I know has got one person, the manager, all helps gone. So we are aware of the situation, and we may be back up here, if you extend the contact, ask them for some help. We might want, if there's a way the county could co-sign for a line of credit, because sometime, money comes in all at one time, and we need a bunch of money to get things ready, and the money not there until after it get there. Because I might say, some of the directors stepped up, and we put up the money when the bank won, and we paid them back, but we did for a short time, we needed the money. So the directors, the association thought that much of the fair to cough up, what, $50,000. We did it twice, and so the directors got the fair at heart. I think with that thing, Steve Chambers here from the, CEO of Western Fair Association, he might want to scum up, they've got a lot of other people, but he's the state. And I might say that Joan, our manager, would be here, except she broke her arm a week ago, Sunday, compound fracture. She is getting a new cast put on today, I talked to her last night, and so she in a lot of pain, because they had a compound, they had to operate on it, put pins in it and stuff, so. Steve?
Yeah, thinking of her daughter's wedding. My name is Steve Chambers, I'm the executive director of the Western Fairs Association. I've been with that company for quite some time. That's why I have this trim fare food figure that comes with the deep-fried world. This topic of fair funding, we could talk about a long time, and I realize that's not your priority today, but you could almost see that transitioning just within this county over the last 70 years, you know, 30 years ago, the only form of legal gambling within the whole region was to go to the California State Fair and bet on thoroughbreds. Of course, now, you don't have to go very far from this building to do just about all the gambling you want within the region. And that's originally for 74 years, that was the total support for California's 76 fair facilities, was some of the profits from horse racing were taken by the state, redirected to the fair network. We're working with the governor's office and with the legislature on trying to find ways to tap into some of the state's revenue streams. Your comment, Mr. Miller, about the economic benefit, I hear you. You know, the state actually is the primary beneficiary of fair activities, because they're getting essentially currently 6% of sales tax statewide. They generate a lot of state income tax from all the businesses that tour the fair industry. I will say, in just reading and knowing a little about the two fairs you have within your county, that there are some significant economic-social benefits that come from all the nonprofit organizations that utilize fairgrounds. all the nonprofit organizations that utilize fairgrounds as kind of a foundation for building their revenue streams, whether it be Huonos or Rotary or other groups that are selling things, utilizing fair facilities, that often they couldn't afford to use other privately held facilities, but you're aware of those kinds of things. It was interesting for me to be listening to this presentation, because I've also, again, I'm not, I don't manage a fair or deal with it at the local level, but the issue of fair impact has been around for a long time. It may interest you to know that up until the mid-sixties, non-agricultural events at fairgrounds were against the law in the state of California. And it was our organization, obviously, before my time and yours as well, that, that changed that law, and there were many groups that were opposed to it, the Drive-In Movie Theater Owners Association and others, they thought that year-round activities at fairgrounds would compete with the local economy. We now know with the virtue of hindsight, that's not true. You know, activities at fairgrounds help drive the local economy, whether it's for cities or counties or local businesses, just, just like convention centers or sports teams or any other event center. But that growth in activity has, of course, put fairgrounds often in difficult positions with their neighbors. Many fairs, most fairs, were just like those slides, were built on the outskirts of town. Just like I have a friend who runs the Californian Veterinary Medical Association, all large animal vets built their clinics on the outskirts of town, because they didn't want people to have to deal with, you know, horses arriving ill in the middle of the night, or barking dogs, or those kinds of things. And then neighborhoods, as our population grew, grew around them, and obviously in hindsight, we probably could have all looked back and done better planning. There are some laws that may interest you. For example, California during fair time, what we know as fair time, that four to twenty-four days of the county fair, the late Senator Roseanne Vuich was successful in having fair time included in the exemptions that agriculture enjoys for harvest. If you live next to a tomato field, and there are driving trucks there at two in the morning during harvest, you can file a nuisance suit, but it will be thrown out, because they have that right to harvest and they were there first. It gets, of course, different when you deal with year-round activities like the Speedway, and as I've also learned, sound is not necessarily, sound management is not a science. I watched this with the Orange County Fair with their amphitheater. There are situations where the noise is significantly higher from music at the amphitheater, a mile and a half from the fairgrounds, compared to six blocks from the fairgrounds. It's a challenge. I do know that Joan would have liked to have been here today, I know that she's, you know, comes from a long history of, in the fair business. I think you're fortunate to have her here in Placer County. I've known her thirty years ago when she worked at the San Diego County Fair. I know she's very interested in solving this problem and very appreciative of working closely with county staff, and I'm sure the city as well. So I just want to do a, attend and listen, and I've appreciated it, and I think you're probably going to have to talk more about both your fairs as we move through the fiscal crisis and try and balance some of those other issues, but I don't think that's your priority today. If there are any questions for me, I'll take them out, or I'll stick around.
I don't see any questions right now, but thank you.
All right, thank you.
And give Joan our best of hope of speedy recovery. Chris?
I'm Chairman Wygant, members of the Board Supervisors. I'm Chris Robles, Community Behguard and Manager for the City of Roseville. Address for the record is three-eleven to Vernon Street, Roseville. First off, I'd like to thank the board for agendizing this item and having this discussion and bringing this item forward for your consideration. And I'd like to personally thank Supervisor Duran for his accessibility and for his outreach to Roseville residents, and that's certainly appreciated. And thank you, Mary, for the presentation today, I enjoyed the historical photos, that was kind of interesting. Before I go into my prepared comments, I think maybe what I'd like to do is to just try to answer a couple of questions that Supervisor Montgomery had regarding any historical data regarding prior noise analyses. There are none that I'm aware of that are in a comprehensive manner, where there are some, I think the fair may have some records of noise measurements, some sound meters for individual vehicles, but nothing that's in a comprehensive manner, such as what J.C. Brennan did in two thousand and seven. J.C. Brennan was a consultant that assisted the city in drafting the city's noise regulation. I drafted the noise regulation, and they were involved in that. That, I believe, was a model for the county's noise regulation that later adopted, and J.C. Brennan was also involved in that. So I think that they're certainly duly qualified to take the next step and revisit the, the fairgrounds and the Speedway. As it relates to any approved projects that the city has approved since two thousand and seven, there is nothing that the city has approved in the vicinity of the fair since two thousand and seven, or since the, really, since the track was, was expanded, and that was actually in the late December two thousand and six. I'll call your attention to the far left side of the screen, there is a project actually under construction that is referred to as the Adora Apartments or Multifamily, that was approved, I want to say in two thousand and four, just due to the economy, it's had a slow start, but it is under construction now. So there is some construction activity in there, but that was, had approvals some time ago. With that, the issue at hand really, it's not, it's not the fair, it's the Speedway, it's noise, it is noise from the Speedway. That is, that is fundamentally the issue that we're dealing with. Looking back at the, the history and identified the paving of the track in nineteen seventy-two, I find it kind of interesting, because the residents and the, the fair and the Speedway have operated without too much difficulty, I would say prior to two thousand, the expansion in two thousand and six, the city received less than a handful of complaints a year. So there was certainly a significant change to two thousand and seven. In nineteen seventy, it seems like we may have a repeat of history, in nineteen seventy, the track was, was paved, and subsequent, or in seventy-two, and subsequently, there was litigation followed, and a stipulated judgment was handed down by the Placer County Superior Court between, to address noise issues as a result of the Speedway and the paving of it at that time. So with that, again, the issue is the Speedway and the noise generated from the Speedway. The city's concern is the actions identified in the memorandum from the facility services provides no substantive or sufficient actions to address the noise issue. The actions that have been taken or proposed provide, or lack an enforcement mechanism, and so that is a concern for us. I'm pleased to hear, or to see that there's fair representatives in the audience this afternoon. From the city's perspective, they've been non-participatory in seeking a solution to this. I appreciate that they've been in discussions with the county, and you had good dialogue in that regard. We'd encourage them to reach out to the city. The fair has not made contact to the city nor reached out to residents, and we think that that's a critical component. The fair rather is actually promoting a campaign on their website that, to support the Speedway, and noting that the work to reduce noise levels on the Speedway has achieved results and is continuing. I don't see any evidence of any changes since the two thousand and eight improvements, and since I was here before the board in March of this year, the city, the county, and the fair have received sixty resident complaints, over sixty resident complaints regarding noise from the Speedway's operation. So the city's concerns are the actions that are insufficient, do not commit a timeline or a timeframe in which to operate in. So I really appreciate Supervisor Duran's comments regarding suggesting a timeframe in which to perform on. At that, with it, we're looking at an additional year in which residents are to endure the Speedway. They have an expanded season this year to thirty-three races extending to the end of October. I believe it was in two thousand and six, two thousand and seven, the race season went from April to September, and now we've gone from March to October this year. The city is encouraged that there's a new agreement that is moving forward. Again, we're concerned that it will not provide the needed changes in enforcement. Until substantive, substantive controls are implemented and significant modifications to the track are completed, an act of enforcement is employed, we believe that the noise issues will persist. And so with that, that completes my comments. I'd be happy to answer any questions, and I really appreciate Supervisor's time this morning.
Any questions, Chris?
If I might. Chris, just for clarification there, so on the sixty complaints, sixty individuals or some of the same people making complaints?
Sixty individual complaints.
Separate individuals?
Yes, approximately sixty. I'll take a quick run through via voicemails and emails that we received, I did not count the folks that had repeated, I know there's several individuals.
And you passed, I think you passed us on, I appreciate that. And it's great, the Fair Association here, the city here, perhaps you two can talk to each other.
Before I came up, I passed my card.
Phone call each way, I think the lines work both ways.
Jennifer?
I just wanted to clarify, you indicated that there was a project approved by the city in two thousand and four. There were no noise studies associated with that project?
The, as far as the details of the study, and the exact date of approval, I'm presuming it was around two thousand and four. That I'm not certain, certainly would require it to comply with building code requirements, which is a forty-five decibel interior standard. So as far as an exterior standard, that's not applicable to it, so.
Okay, that was a lot of words. No noise study was done relating to it?
I can't speak to that, I can't confirm or, that a noise study was done or not done. But I can confirm that it would require it to comply with building code, which requires a forty-five decibel interior, and that does consider the exterior environment.
So if a noise study were done, had been done on that project, it would have met the exterior noise standards?
No, it would have been required to conform to building code requirements, which was an interior noise level of forty-five.
Perhaps if I can assist Supervisor, discretionary permits issued by the, the City of Roseville require a SECO analysis, as I think you've mentioned last time. And so you would have to do noise analysis as part of any of those projects that surround the fairgrounds, right?
Correct.
So if that part required a rezone, or a use permit, or something like that, then there would be a SECO review.
It was a design review, it did require a SECO document associated with it, to the extent that there was a separate consultant or separate noise analysis done, or whether it took information from existing information, such as our general plan updates typically will provide ambient level recognition throughout the city.
But each one of those are independent decision by the city on each project as to whether or not the noise analysis is sufficient?
Correct.
Kirk?
Yeah, Chris, I just want to be sure that I heard you clearly. Did you say that prior to the expansion of the track, the city hadn't been receiving complaints, or hadn't received complaints about noise?
We did receive complaints, but it was very modest. I think folks accepted that the racetrack was there and it operated, and it was, it was fine, and many people recognized that. So I don't think, you know, occasionally we might have a new resident that moved in and didn't recognize that the racetrack was there, and first Saturday in spring when the races started up, they may have called the city. And an explanation that, you know, the city's been there since, or the racetrack's been there since nineteen seventy-two, and it continues to operate, and it's regulated by the, the fair and the county, that seems to satisfy. And again, it was just a, a small number of complaints received. There was a significant increase in complaints in the geographic location in which those complaints were received from, changed dramatically in two thousand and seven.
Yeah, the only reason I ask is, is going back to my first term on the board, when I first came on in ninety-three, and Supervisor Osnick represented the area there, he was on quite a crusade against the, the fair and the racing, particularly due to the noise. He was very insistent that the, the number of complaints that were being received justified some drastic action as it related to the fairgrounds and their location there. And I recall even when I, I left this board in ninety-six, I was appointed to the fair board and served on the fair board for three years, and I know the entire time, we continued to work with Don Lunsford at the county and, and Al Johnson at the city to continue to address noise-related issues, particularly related to racing back then in the seventies, or in the nineties, I'm sorry. So I, this is, to my recollection, it's certainly nothing new. It may have elevated, more folks might have started dialing you guys about the issue, but, but we, it's something we have been struggling with.
Certainly noise has been a longstanding history, I mean, clearly since nineteen seventy-two, that a litigation was, was brought forward. I mean, you can look back from that point and see a long history of it. Certainly, I think in the latter years or prior to two thousand and six, for the most part, I think it was generally accepted by the community that that would occur on Saturdays. And it wasn't until the expansion that the, the nature of the racing changed, and certainly the noise levels changed, and the, the operations changed as well. Typically, a, a Saturday race includes a test and tune on Friday, and this is probably all detail, but a test and tune on, on Friday, and then racing on Saturday. With the expansion in two thousand and seven, the test and tune days extended into Thursday, so we had Thursday, Friday, because the races were larger. My discussions with Dennis Gage, the Speedway manager, indicated to me that one of the reasons they're having difficulty in, in completing the races prior to ten o'clock was that they changed the, the larger races, which were twenty-five to thirty laps, went to a hundred laps. And so the card may have stayed the same on the number of races they did a night, but then the laps increased, and so that created much more difficulty in trying to complete the races within a specified time period. So, so it wasn't just the, I think that the acoustic characteristics of the track changed. What's not really evident from the, the side-by-side comparison, it shows that certainly the track did get larger to the, to the east and to the, to the north, but the track, the turns were elevated significantly. So they're maybe twice as high in elevation as what they were previously to the, the two thousand and six configuration. And so, you know, there's a lot more going on to this than I understand acoustically, but I know that it's definitely different than where it was before. And so by and large, it generally was accepted, we did get complaints, and we, we had a continuous stream of complaints, but they're certainly not to the level that we, we have now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to open it up to the public, so anyone who wishes to address the board, please come forward and state your name.
Hi, my name is Liz Channell, I'm resident of Roseville, and I understand the noise issues. On Mr. Osick's, he's complained about a lot of issues. He's not happy with anything Roseville does, and all you have to do is watch a council meeting, and you want to understand that. We've been going to Heslini two of the races twenty-seven years, and I can tell you, I understand you should take in all different districts, okay? But this is a regional thing. Having a fair ground of a jewel of this size, and what it produces, and what it puts out every year, and how it satisfies so many interests, is a regional thing, okay? We sit at the races, not only with the big races that come in, and there's two a year, and Mr. McEnelly puts these on, and these are class acts. The, the security is there, the transporters come in systematically, it's cleaned up like one, two, three, you can go by the track maybe at midnight, and everybody's taken out. The fairgrounds are clean and everything, and you would not believe the fun it is to go to these races. It's not what you may think, oh my God, the gearheads or the bikers. As the article in the Bee showed, and I have nothing against them, and I will tell you, I sat three rows up from those gentlemen, and they were very, very well behaved. There's little, little tiny kids that go to these, there's teenagers, there's adults, and there's elderly people, and everybody has a good time, the security is there. And it's just a family atmosphere, and it's entertaining. Where can you go now, okay, and get in for thirteen dollars and watch hours of entertainment, okay? Good down-home entertainment. And my question is, if a fairground and the facility has been there for fifty years, if it's going to bother you that much, why did you buy in that area? I'm not criticizing these people, because I do know sound is aggravating, and it does travel, just as the gentleman pointed out. It travels really freaky, you can be on one street, one place, and another. But the track has been there forever, okay? It's just like Roseville High School has been there way forever. Are we going to start complaining about Friday night football games, which is another all-American pastime? And what you don't understand is that these races bring people not only from Roseville and Lincoln, but we have sat next to people that have come in from Nevada, Fallon, Nevada, to come in and check out the track. And when the big races come in, the two, which trust me, these little tracks are jewels, they're falling on the wayside because of development and houses going up and so forth, the price of real estate in California, all the tracks were disappearing. But, so these are unique to have, and they're coming in to check it out, and you'll sit in the stands, we sit in, it's a joke, we sit in the same place every Saturday night, okay? And you'll talk to people, and it's like, wow, this is a really neat area. We've never been to this, we came into this. They're bringing money and revenue into our city, and it's not just, it's, it's every Saturday night, you meet somebody different, that's from out of the area coming in and discovering our resources. I guess the Bee means I have to be quiet, right?
You could wrap up.
Okay. I said my piece, and I just hope that you'll take into consideration all the benefits. And I just have to say one thing, they do call the races short, okay, if it's going to run into a timeframe problem. And they are done at ten o'clock, okay? And so I believe even the pit lights go out before eleven. And so they have been truly trying everything, like I said, to, to be good neighbors themselves. Thank you.
Next, next speaker, please.
Hi, my name's Heidi Goss, I'm a Lincoln resident and grew up raising animals at the fair. Everything that I learned through raising and exhibiting my animals at Placer County Fair has helped me shape, shaped me into the person I am today. Participating in the junior livestock auctions each year allowed me not only to, to learn valuable skills like accounting and time management, but they opened a door to a new opportunity. skills like accounting and time management, but they opened a door to a new opportunity called college. The JLA has started my college fund, and through working in a few scholarships, I've been able to pay for all my school funding on my own without loans. I'm currently at Chico State, where I'm in charge of the sheep unit, all the nutrition and maintenance aspects of that, and I work at Butte County Fair as a livestock secretary and superintendent. Following college, I planned to continue into the fair industry, and through the support from the county, these county fairs will continue to go as long as you have the support. And it's not just supporting the fair itself, it's supporting an event, it's creating lifestyles, continuing family legacies, and producing memories and lessons that will last a lifetime.
Thank you. Next speaker, please, just come forward and state your name.
Yes, good afternoon. My name is Heidi Knost, and my husband and I bought our home in the Los Cerritos neighborhood in 1999 after the birth of our second daughter. And we had rented there for two years prior to that. And we knew full well that we were setting down roots five, about five blocks from a racetrack. However, we were attracted to the well-established neighborhood, rich with history and homes with character, and we've been lovingly restoring our 1922 bungalow ever since. Admittedly, we have never been fond of the noise produced by the racetrack, but in the past couple of years, this noise has increased dramatically, so much so that I've taken time off work today to be here. We have double-pane windows throughout our home, and even with our doors closed on a beautiful weekend afternoon, playing music on our stereo, that cannot drown out the noise from the racetrack now. And we can now forget Friday through Sunday evenings outside on the patio with friends. And by the way, the trains going by are infrequent, race cars go on for quite some time. I'd like to point out that it's not only the increased noise that is of concern here. On several occasions, we have smelled the toxic mixture of exhaust and brake dust emanating from the fairgrounds, and have told our two daughters to come inside the house for that reason. And even though our children don't go to Woodbridge School, I'm concerned about the brake dust landing on the school's playground equipment, and what happens to the health of those children who play there. Due to the probable negative effects on residents' health, I respectfully request that the county and its fairgrounds conduct a pollution study as well, to assess the impacts that these newer, larger-engine race cars have on the public health and welfare of the citizens of the City of Roseville and the County of Placer. And I trust that you will do what is best for your constituents. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker, please. Yeah, if you're going to speak, please be ready to come up so we can keep the hearing going.
Morning Chairman Wagon and members of the board and Mr. Miller. My name is Mike Cassis, and I'm a resident of the City of Roseville in the Diamond Oaks neighborhood. Thank you for allowing me to speak today, and I hope you hear and understand what I have to say before you provide input and direction, and before you finalize the agreement with the association. Couple of things have already been taken care of, but the wonderful presentation by your county staff here has really made the point that there is a lot more neighborhoods that are now impacted by this raceway than there were years ago. The update notes that the Fair Association has managed the fairgrounds at a break-even point, about $1.3 million in revenues and expenditures with the Speedway generating more than 50% of the revenue. What I'd like to see at some point in time is what its share of the expenditures are as well. The further update says that the California Department of Food and Agriculture has estimated about $12 million in economic benefit to the state and local economy in 2009, but it does not indicate how much of that benefit is attributable to the Speedway operation itself, because it's a different operation than the fair activities. So looking just at the Speedway, what kind of an impact does it have on the economy? And just how much of that benefit accrues to the residents of Roseville, the community that has to live with the raceway? The report concludes saying that the county is concerned by the neighborhood complaints, and is striving to develop new agreements, so on and so forth. That's good to hear, actually, I do thank you. Supervisor Duran, you have been a leader in this area, and I do appreciate you all taking steps to address this. But you've got to remember that the update says the Fair Association notified the county regarding the improvement project already underway in December of 2006. Yet the county did not step in, and it could have. They could have stepped in and suspended work on the improvements pending the necessary reviews and permits, but it didn't. It went ahead and allowed it to be completed, and the grand jury report subtitle notes it all, it says that they would face a case of oversight failure. So I agree, again, we need to conduct more oversight on this facility. The actions do speak louder than words, and it's the nature of those actions that count. Conducting yet another noise study, participating in more meetings, and making further sound barrier modifications will not be enough. The county must do the following. Include and implement enforcement provisions in the new agreement. Hold the Fair Association responsible for complying with the noise ordinances of the City of Roseville. It's the city's noise ordinances that should be followed, because that whole operation is wholly within the bounds of the city. Conduct, excuse me, contract with an independent sound monitoring firm selected jointly by the city and the county. Don't let the Fair Association or the people who have a vested interest in this thing alone select that sound consultant. Make sure that that sound consultant is acceptable to both the city and the Fair Association and the county. Impose meaningful sanctions when the noise violations occur, including monetary penalties for offenders, and immediate cessation of operations when sound levels exceed city established limits. Just about done. Conduct a full environmental impact study on the improvements, publish the findings, and take all necessary actions. A lot of people tell me that I should have known about the Speedway before moving in. I did know about the Speedway, and I've lived with it for 11 years, but in 2006, something changed, 2007. It's a game changer. You know, you think about this, you look back at that map, if you remove, go back to that early map, and you remove all the residences that were built since 1955, and you try and build a Speedway just like that today, you'd never do it. It would never pass muster. There are too many residences, hundreds of residences, that are within the shot of that track that have been there before the track was there. And a lot of people think that I want to shut the track down. I do not want to shut the track down, okay? I think personally that the Fair Association and the county have done the racers and their fans a great disservice by not looking ahead to the future and saying, you know, this is going to be a thorn in our side forever. Let's talk about plans to move it, a land swap, find a better location. You know it's coming. So I think that the county needs to include provisions for a long-term studying in the contract, and to make, set a date certain for that. So I thank you for the time, and I appreciate your concerns.
How many more people want to address this issue? Please be prepared to come on up when the next, come on.
Good afternoon Commissioner Wagon and Commissioners, thank you for this opportunity to speak about this issue. My name is Greg Suba, and I'm a resident of Roseville. And for the record, my family and I live two blocks south in the Los Cerritos neighborhood, and we've been there for 14 years. I'll try not to repeat too much of what's already been said. Since 2000, since 1997, we've had a livable relationship with the racetrack, and we enjoy the benefits of the fairground. I echo the comments of the previous speaker that, as a community member, I'd like to see the fairground and the community coexist amicably as it has been for decades. However, being fully aware, having done our due diligence, that we live next to a track and a train track, a racetrack and a train track, something changed in 2007. The noise is significantly more. The smell is different. We can no longer, on some nights, carry on a conversation on our front porch with someone who's sitting two feet away from us. So I would like to state personally to you that in letters to the grand jury, the county stated that it was unable to confirm that nearby residents' quality of life has suffered from the improvements of the track. But it has. At a personal level, I can tell you that that's the case. Do we have scientific information? I don't know. No, I don't. Perhaps a forensic study could be done with physics and determine what kind of a noise would be produced by the numbers of cars and types of cars that were raced before the improvements to find some relationship there. I believe that the improvements represented a discretionary action that should have been reviewed by a jurisdictional agency as a project that impacts the public, and in that way, it constitutes a project under CEQA, and that that step was missed. Noise, we've heard, is a challenge to assess, but I don't think the proper way to do it is to create the problem and then assess ways to mitigate it after the fact. This is something that should have been analyzed beforehand. What's not gray is that Fair Association, the county, somebody went ahead and made major improvements without permits, without an environmental review. And it should be noted that the changes were made before state budgets were cut, before the market crashed. And to use those financial hardships as an argument now to maintain the current status of this track is a bit of pretzel logic. So as a member of the local community, I make this appeal to the county supervisors to fully consider and follow the recommendations of the City of Roseville as we as a community resolve these issues. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. I think there are two more.
Good afternoon, my name is Deborah Cassis, and I live a little further away than just a couple blocks from the racetrack. I'm over on the other side of Diamond Oaks. And we knew when we moved in there that there was going to be noise from the racetrack, and that, you know, we lived with it on a regular basis. 2007, things changed. Not only is it just the drum of the motors, but we hear the squeaking of the tires, we hear the PA system, we hear the singing and laughing over the PA system. Part of the issue that we have is when the development started, I had contacted the raceway and had asked if there was an environmental impact study that had taken place beforehand, and they ignored me. I had asked for it several times, by email, called them, and then I found out after the fact, they hadn't even bothered getting permits to do this, okay? I had read the draft and recommendations. I know they put up a sound wall, but however, the materials that they used for the sound wall were not the materials that were recommended in this report, okay? It's more of a plywood, where they put open windows in it so they can stand and watch, absolutely does nothing but maybe bounce the sound around. The noise, in regards to the sound noise that took place, we had complained and had a test done numerous times from our property. None of that was included in this test that was done. None of the area was even included, none of the noise decimal tests. They included the railroad tracks, and I agree, railroad tracks, the noise of the trains do consider, but it's not all day long, it's not all week long, like the noise from the track is. In regards to exposing the noise per realtors, it is something that if we put our homes up for sale, we do have to notify and let people know about the racetrack noise. And this has been told us by several realtors. So whether or not it has an effect on our property, I would say yes, it does, because that's something people are going to look at and they're going to think about. The noise travels not just two blocks away, people have said it. You can go two miles away, you can go three miles away. My daughter lives near 65 and Pleasant Grove, she can hear the PA and the noise at times from her home, three miles away. So it does travel, it does bounce off those walls. It can shift depending on the noise, depending on the wind. Sometimes we get it more, sometimes we not. But there are a lot of times, we can't sit outside. I'll say the same thing as these other people. We can't sit in our own backyard three days out of the week. We have to bring people inside, we have to talk louder, we have to turn our music up louder, you can hear it through closed doors and windows. This didn't happen since 2007. I think I've covered everything else, I want to thank you for your time.
Thank you. I think we have one more speaker.
Hi, my name is Catherine Eyed, and I live at 416 Las Vegas Avenue, which is exactly kitty corner from the administration building. I bought my home there 11 years ago, and honestly, the noise, I'm sorry, I'm not going to call it noise, it is sound. It is a sound that I can easily ignore and move on with my life. And it has, as far as I'm concerned, has not changed. But as everybody has stated, noise does, sound travels oddly. You enjoy the benefit of this ceiling. Have you ever sat in a domed room and be able to completely hear a person's conversation tables away from you, perfectly clear, however you have a problem hearing the person across the table from you? The sound travels differently depending on cloud cover, depending on wind direction, depending on a lot of things. But as far as I'm concerned, I have had many Saturday evening, you know, gatherings at my home, in my front yard, in my backyard, was never a problem. And I just want to say one more thing, there's sounds of life, you know? If you live near a school, you're going to hear kids Monday through Friday screaming, yelling in the schoolyard. If you live near a freeway, you're going to hear cars, and that's 24 hours a day. And everybody, if you have a lawn, you're going to hear lawn mowers, leaf blowers, and the other irritating sounds that go with that. If you live in Roseville, there's sounds associated with that. There's the train tracks 24 hours a day, but the races at the Speedway, it is only on Saturday night, and it is just for a few hours. Yes, they do have the test and tune, but that's not a constant, you know, they take turns. Just one more thing, supposedly there were 60 complaints. Look at the homes. Look at the homes, and I wouldn't be surprised if a lot of those were repeats. As far as it being a detriment to home values, you know, I think if that whole area was multifamily housing, that would be a bigger detriment to the local home values. And I am not a real race fan per se, but I have attended, I do enjoy it. There's a lot of people that attend there, and it's just good, clean, family fun.
Thank you for your comment.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, please hurry up. Hopefully your comments will be something that's new.
I think so. My name is Bill McEnally, I'm a resident of Roseville. I started racing at All-American Speedway back in the early 80s, but I was originally hired there as a certified sound man back in 1986, and I worked 86 season, it's how I found my love of racing there as a sound man. They had me certified in recording decibels, and I was there because there was a sound problem in 86 that we were trying to work with. The city was there on many Saturday nights with us, and we worked through it, we found ways to work through it. They gave us a sound level that we had to meet, and we made the cars meet it on Saturday night. Since then, I rent the facility, I've worked my way through the track and the different divisions, all the way up, started touring regionally, and we actually bring a NASCAR regional race. It was brought to the Speedway back in the 80s and had quite an absence, and we brought it back in 2009 for the first time again. And it is a big event that we bring. We've, I work with the fair board, and I try to work with the neighbors. I gave a call to Chris before our race in April to try to work with the people in the area that have the complaints at the sound wall. I invited him in, I figured if you're going to have to hear the racing, you might as well come and enjoy it. Tried to, I'll buy you dinner, come down to the races. We didn't get anybody that wanted to come down and partake. But I know when we, when the improvements were made to the track, and a lot of them were safety-oriented, the way the off-ramp, if you could show the two pictures of the racetrack, the way the off-ramp used to be at the racetrack, several times, we, cars went out into Washington Boulevard from the racetrack, because the exit went right out the fence onto Washington Boulevard. So what we call expansions, where the on-ramp and the exit are there, there was actually race cars that would wind up on Washington Boulevard. So the improvements, they weren't made to necessarily expand the track, the wall was crumbling, the walls were falling down, and the track did wind up getting larger through these improvements. But that wasn't the purpose of it. The purpose was to improve the racetrack, not extend it. And I know, we drummed up, the county did spend some money for these improvements, but through local involvement, local business, we put together $600,000 that local businesses contributed to see this renovation done at the racetrack. And if we have a guideline of what we need to do to the sound to help this, if we've got restrictions, if the sound, the new sound study, the first one showed to build a wall. So I know several businessmen that paid for the money to So I know several businessmen that paid for the money to build the wall. If this sound study will show us what we can do to help these residents improve their quality of living and get their homes back to w-les, I will diligently work, and I know a lot of people will, to find the resources and make these changes so that these guys can get back to their quality of life. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Then I'll close the public comment. And the agenda says direction is appropriate, and so unless there's a compelling motion, why don't we start at one end and just everybody can have the opportunity to make comments to staff as to how we go forward? Does that make sense? So Kirk, you want to, no? Jennifer, do you want to start? If we start at one end, we've got, there's two of you here.
We're going end to end.
Well, I guess we could start at this end, and then we could go outward.
Hard to figure out, Robert, some days. I guess, let me just state that I am a racetrack fan, but frankly, I think if it's not dirt track racing, it's not even worth being there. I'm a sprint car and crown car fan myself. My real question is, why were no permits pulled for this? I mean, that's my biggest hang-up on this whole thing right now. Wayne, were you there at the time? I mean, can you address that question?
I wasn't very involved with the race part, but I was on the race board, and we had some safety turns. The wall had cracked on one turn. It was $65,000 to fix that. We had, it busted during the race that, you know, we had put a temporary thing there, but we had to do something before we could open race. So we started, they started to say, why do that? And then as a board member, they said, well, we've got to do that. Then we've got to have the ramps on that far side. The cars was going out into where they shouldn't be. If you notice, the ramps on and out are straight out, and if something happened to the car, they go straight out through the pit area and they end up on the street. So they decided to put them on the side where they should be, and you need to extend the track a little bit. So they said, all safety things. So I was told we didn't need permits. As a board member, I didn't, I was told we didn't need, I was just doing safety things. And that's all I know.
Okay. So based on that, I guess my direction to staff would be some of the things that we really need to do apparently with the fair board is educate the permitting process and when they do and don't need permits. Because I'm, I mean, I'm just shocked that this level of, you know, rebuilding a facility could go on, and there was just no idea that permits were needed. I mean, that's shocking to me.
Jim?
Well, clearly, I could see the need for improvement, safety reasons, but it seems to me that the sound issue was not fully addressed when they did the improvements. So I want to thank Supervisor Duran for taking this head on. You've done a tremendous job bringing everybody together, and I look forward to working with you to resolve this issue.
Continuing this direction, my comments are, like Wayne, I grew up showing my cows at the Roseville Fair as a forager from the best club in the county, by the way, which is Mount Pleasant 4-H Club, if anybody had any question about that. So clearly, the fair is a amenity of significant regional benefit, and it would be, I think, just catastrophic if for some reason we lost it. And the story, as Kirk and others have talked about, goes way, way back, trying to find a method by which the fair can be financially sound and continue to operate venue for what has emerged courses racing. But one point I will make out is that in the county's general plan update, which was completed in 1994, it actually specifically sets aside the Westerly Third and the Sunset Industrial Area as a possible fairground relocation site. To make that happen, it's got to work financially. And, you know, if there are enough interested partners, that would be one alternative. Something to keep in mind if we were to start down that road is that what we learned from the Bill Graham Apothecary application here in Placer County was that the sound does travel and it bounces, and it's significantly different from day to day depending on the inversion layer and a bunch of other things. So just because you move it out there to the edge of a town, that doesn't necessarily mean that you're not going to have a significant noise two, three, five miles away. So we need to be realistic if we're going to start that process, but it is prospectively an option pending the finances. But it does at least measure the activism with which we've tried to strategically resolve some of these conflicts. Beyond that, I think I would commend Supervisor Duran also for the outreach and the way you've jumped into the middle of this, and I hope we would continue that amongst all of the interested parties, particularly county, city of Roseville, and the Fair Association. And hopefully, we can try to find the best solution possible. Jack?
No, I appreciate that very much. And I think Mary and Jim, you already heard my comments. You already know where I stand on this particular issue. We just keep moving forward. You know, I'm really glad to hear that we've got Fair Association, we've got one of the largest sponsors involved. We've got, you know, we're talking with the community, we've got the city involved. You know, with all of that, all of these folks at the table, I think we can continue to move forward and get to a resolution, you know, within a reasonable amount of time.
Kirk, did you have anything else? Okay. That completes the board hearing. Except for closed session, we will adjourn to closed session during lunch. And so Jerry, if you want to.
The board will now adjourn to closed session to discuss the items on page four, the agenda item 12, a conference with real property negotiator and a conference with labor negotiators. I will be sitting in on the labor negotiations rather than Val Flood.